To the Tuesday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee Meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with correspondence. I'll turn it over to Nicole.
The committee received the following correspondence. Emails from Mr. Jeffrey Klopz received on September thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one regarding the Gaga pit at Blueberry Hill School. An email from Ms. Erin Lau dated September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one regarding students from Center School who matriculate to Glenbrook Middle School. And an email from Ms. Corinne Griffin dated September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one requesting the calendar of school committee minutes or meetings and the location of approved school committee minutes.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have a possible motion for the approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me? Next item is visitor comments. And just a couple of notes, just as reminders. So first thing, I just want to remind folks that some of us have a mask on, some of us don't. Those of us who are in the meeting room together are wearing masks. Folks who are not wearing masks are at home or in their office by themselves. So just to remind everybody of that. Also, if folks want to make a comment, you get one shot and you can have up to three minutes. The committee will listen, but we will not respond in the moment. We may take up your question later on in the meeting or at a subsequent meeting. And as a reminder, folks are always welcome and encouraged to send us emails. And so with that, happy to open it up to visitor comments. So if you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand either with your video on or using the reactions button in Zoom. All right. It appears that we have no visitor comments. All right. So we move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to thank the parents and guardians of the Williams Middle School community for attending the Parent Advisory Council meeting on Friday. It was an excellent meeting. There was some great discussion and questions and Principal Nelson provided a thorough overview and update of what's been going on. The parents and guardians again had some great questions and everybody was positive and looking forward to a great school year.
Thank you, Gianna. Suzie?
Yes, on a similar note, I'm grateful to the parents who showed up for the Blueberry Hill, the two PTO meetings that were held over the last week. There were a lot of parents that showed up, a lot of great folks willing to volunteer again. It was great to have the meetings in person again. And we got some great updates, got to meet the new Assistant Principal at Blueberry Hill with Ms. Lemoche, who's up and running and doing some great work. And also Back to School Night was well, well done at, at Blueberry Hill. And I think every school, every elementary school took a similar theme. So just, just great work by everybody. Very grateful for all of the, all of the willingness to pitch in and get back to some version of, of pre-COVID experiences. So great work.
Absolutely. Mary, go ahead.
I have similar updates. I attended the first PAC meeting at Long Meadow High School of the school year. Mr. Capitasto presented and gave an overview of the many changes to the MIAA. Mr. Lander has provided a really positive overview of our welcome back to school. And also it was great to hear parent questions. And again, new to this role, it is one of the questions, for example, was about the test and stay program. And so I look forward to an update tonight at our meeting. And it was just a really great way to connect with the community and hear what families are thinking about in terms of their high school students. A couple of other things, I attended the Center School Open House and my husband attended the Williams Open House and they've been so well run and it just, I mean, you can just sense that parents, many of them have not been in a school building since before March twenty twenty. So there's this energy and excitement by parents to be back in the buildings. And then just two comments about some of our sports teams. Long Meadow Cross Country had a car wash recently, raised a lot of funds. And just a general comment that our town cross country program is so wonderful and there's been a lot of interaction with our, you know, younger students coming up to cheer on our high school students at their meets. And also some of our high school students who are working with our younger runners. And that's just been exciting to see. Also, the Long Meadow Boys Volleyball Team, Girls Volleyball Team and Girls Soccer Team volunteered at the Rugged Maniac in Southwick. They received a donation in exchange and I spent five hours on the Rugged Maniac trail with my son. And it was just a really great experience. The girls soccer team was so inspired that they actually ran it. It was fun. Uh, no, I would have.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mary. And, and just to
My shift is too late in the day. Next year.
I mean, it really was awesome. So thanks for bringing that up. And, and one other thing that I know I talked to Marty about and it seems like the right time to throw it in there is it's really easy now to see the sports schedule. If you go on the high school webpage, go to sports or go to athletics, there's a schedule for all of the games. It's amazing. So I think that's a great thing to remind parents of. You can go and check it out. And I'm sure Dagan's going to talk more about that as well. But it's, it's great. It's something that we've been wanting and now we're able to get it. And I think it's great for the community. It's great for the younger kids to come and see the older kids playing games. And so I think, I think it's awesome that we have that going on. So yeah, lots of, of really positive stuff going on. Other comments? All right. I think we're going to keep moving forward. Okay, we have no business with guests, so it's right to administrative reports. And we're going to kick it over to Marty.
Well, thank you. So in your packet, you have a sort of a narrative version of the superintendent's report. And there's some critical sort of public health information that is worth sharing. So I took the sort of the narrative part, some of the narrative parts of that and just put it into a brief slide deck here. And so if you just bear with me, it might be of interest to folks who are who are watching at home. So I'm going to keep it on the, on this view, otherwise I lose sight of everyone. So I want to start with just a little illustration of the active cases in quarantine in Long Meadow Public Schools. This is information that our nurses are kind enough to update on a daily basis. So we have a running spreadsheet that tells us how many active cases we have among Long Meadow Public School students and then the number of students who are quarantining. And you'll see that we hit a peak about a week or so ago and encouragingly it is falling off, although it it picked up just a little bit today. So we're encouraged to see that the number of students that are quarantining and the number of active cases has dropped off in the last several days. I really attribute that to the, the speedy work that our administrators and our nurses do. They, they jump on active cases and they're quick to communicate with families to let them know if there's a situation, a COVID scenario. And, and families have been incredibly cooperative and they're, they're keeping children home when they're sick, which we appreciate. And they're understanding that, you know, those, there are situations where students have to quarantine. So when we, when we act quickly, we're able to isolate active cases and keep children at home who are close contacts. And so so this is, this is encouraging. And, and as we've noted in the past, the number of students subject to quarantining will be far less this year because vaccinated individuals are exempt. And we know that individuals outside of three feet who are masked are not subject to quarantine as well. So so this is, uh, this is encouraging. It's something that we keep our eyes on and, and we'll continue to keep the committee updated on our numbers as far as active cases and quarantining. The next slide sort of captures the, on the left, the, the DPH data relating to percentage of individuals who are fully vaccinated. And as we talked about at your last meeting, the, the DPH data is different than the data that our nurses have direct access to through the immunization database. And there are some sort of understandable reasons for that. So recognizing that some of the individuals who are represented here might not be Long Meadow Public School students, but it's a snapshot of of Long Meadow children generally in that twelve to fifteen and sixteen to nineteen age range. Certainly any students who are graduates in that sixteen to nineteen band are, are not with us. And so they're, but they are represented on the chart. You'll see that there, as of the twenty seventh, there were fourteen active cases in town. You know, almost all of which were among vaccinated individuals, which is interesting, but I suppose that speaks to also to the level of vaccinations that we have here in Long Meadow. When there is, we are a community with high, a relatively high percentage of individuals who are vaccinated. So I suppose it stands to reason that we're going to see more cases that are breakthrough cases. So thanks to the Board of Health folks for providing us with that information. I wanted to update the committee and the community on the diagnostic testing program. After a few false starts, we were finally, on, on the part of the state, we were finally identified with a partner, MedSource has been our, will be our partner on the diagnostic testing program. They're sort of a, a, I guess, a subcontractor of the vendor that the state has identified. The state level vendor on this is an outfit called CIC Health. And so MedSource is working beneath CIC Health to help us get our diagnostic testing program up and running. I think I might have mentioned at your last meeting, we have, you know, boxes full of the rapid testing kits and we have plenty of PPE that have come in to us through this program. And so that's, that's an important first step. We also have issued the consent forms and, and families have been great about consenting to the diagnostic testing that will be a part of this. Across the state, there's, there's definitely some recognition that the state has had some, some difficulty scaling this program up. And we, we learned recently, for example, that they, when they had contracted with CIC Health, they had anticipated that there would be around eight hundred or so schools that would participate. In fact, it turned out to be over two thousand. So really far more interest in participation in this across the state than the state anticipated. And so I guess the only way to say it is that CIC Health is really working hard, working in overdrive. They're scrambling to hire qualified individuals to support this, this really ambitious testing program. So there are, you know, quite a few considerations that we have to pin down. The materials, we mentioned the consent, the testing protocols, along with a lot of the data management or record keeping procedures that we need to pin down as well. Our MedSource partners are meeting with us tomorrow. Myself, our nurse leader, invited our assistant superintendents and some of the town health officials will be part of that as well. So we just really need to pin down exactly what this test and stay program is going to look like. Each school has identified a dedicated room where the diagnostic testing will take place. MedSource tells me that they have dedicated testers, trained testers who will come to Long Meadow Public Schools to complete the testing. I want to find out more about the qualifications of these testers. And I also want to do our due diligence to make sure that that both CIC, MedSource and Long Meadow Public Schools have done the sort of proper background testing on, on the individuals that will be supporting this testing program. So all in all, hoping that we can get this launched by October twelfth, our, our priority will be the, the test and stay portion of this. Although, as you can see from our numbers, the number of individuals that would even be eligible for test and stay is very, very limited. So we think that opens the door for kind of launching more quickly than we anticipated with the symptomatic diagnostic screening. So I suppose by your next meeting on the, I think it's the fourteenth or fifteenth, I think we'll, we'll be, maybe the thirteenth, we'll be in a position to update further, but I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get this up and running by the second week of October, but still plenty of work to be done with that. So and then finally, worth just a brief snapshot of where things stand with, with masking. Last night, the Board of Health conducted a review of the townwide mask mandate. They, they have not pulled back at all. They've not rolled that back. I haven't gotten a formal report from any of the town officials on that, but I do know that they, they did not pull back the townwide mask mandate. I'm sure we all would have known by now if that, that were the case. The, the Dr. Bayeski, who met with Ms. Monahan and I a couple of weeks back, has indicated that they're, they're really looking at this holistically and they're not hanging their decision on any single metric. I think this committee is aware that DESI had extended the, the mask requirement through at least November first, and they have, but they've also said at the same time that October fifteenth would be a, a date where districts could begin to access that eighty percent vaccination rate threshold. Again, assuming school committees and local boards of health elect to use that as an option. So I, I don't anticipate that that will be the case frankly in Long Meadow. I don't think the Board of Health will be reconvening on this issue until well after the fifteenth. They have committed to sort of monthly reviews on the masking requirement, but I think, you know, the, the DESI eighty percent threshold is kind of moot for us at this point, given that we have a townwide mask requirement. I want to thank our consulting physician, Dr. Judy Tapper, sent us this article earlier today. And I can send the committee the link to it, but I just wanted to represent it visually. And it's a, it's a, it's a CDC study by the, I, I thought this was interesting, the MMWR, which is the morbidity and mortality weekly report. So that, that's doesn't sound like a report I'd like to work on regularly on a weekly basis, but this MMWR report has, as they've done some extensive studying of, of the protective features of, of masking in schools. So that's, I think it validates the decision of this committee and the decision of the Long Meadow Board of Health. And, and so I wanted to, to share that with the committee because it came directly from our, our consulting physician, Dr. Judy Tapper. So while I, while I have this up, I did want to circle back with the committee on, on lunch. I know that that was a, a topic that the committee had asked that we, we consult with the Board of Health.
So Marty, do you mind if we pause and take questions before we move on?
Yep, a lot to consider.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I know I, I saw at least Bronwyn's hand up. So
Sorry about that.
Why don't we start with Bronwyn and then we can see who else has questions before we move on to our next topic. Bronwyn, go ahead.
I don't mind waiting, but just, just a quick question. So Marty, for the DESI eighty percent vaccination rate threshold, I realize that even the date of the fifteenth won't be something that we would hit anyways because the Board of Health won't have met again by then. But is that students, staff, faculty, like everyone, eighty percent?
So they have issued some companion guidance on how to evaluate that eighty percent threshold. And it is, it does include everyone in a school building that works regularly in a school building. So it would be staff, students. It would be coaches, anybody that's regularly serving students throughout the school day. Now, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But the people who work at the school don't, don't have to give their vaccination status. So how do we know if we're at eighty percent? I know it's not going to be on the fifteenth. I'm just thinking in the future if we did get there.
Yeah, I think you're asking great questions and, and though it won't be on the fifteenth, I think we do have to get our heads around the questions that you're asking. My understanding is, and we have to explore this a little bit further, but my understanding is they would permit staff and families, parents and caregivers to attest to vaccination status. So in other words, my, my first pass through on this, and again, I, I just want to, we might need some more time to dive into this with DESI, but my first pass through on this was that they, they would permit staff and parents to attest to vaccination status rather than relying on, let's say, a DPH database or the immunization database. Again, we've got some homework to do on that and, and I'll bring, bring, you know, complete clarity of that at your next meeting, but that's, that's my current understanding.
Okay, thanks.
Let's go to Suzie.
Yes, thank you for this. I just wanted to circle back to some concerns we had heard early on about masking. Because I think they were important and they were specific to certain populations of students, especially those students requiring any form of speech intervention. And I know that we had a conversation at that point. I, and, and probably, you know, you might not have the answer, Dr. O'Shea, at this point, but I think it's just important to bring that back. Like, how, how are we accommodating those, those learners currently with their servicing? And you know, how has it been going? And is there anything we can do to support the, you know, the continuation of that?
Yeah. And, and Sue, feel free to jump in. I know you're connected to our, our youngest learners sometimes who, who are, you know, maybe are the most challenged with the mask. So far, the compliance has been great. Children have responded appropriately to it. And I'm, I'm hearing from administrators that there's a lot of prompting and correction that needs to be done, or at least at the beginning of the school year that needed to happen. With students who are, who need to see facial expressions or a teacher's mouth or social skills development or speech therapy. We have frequently adults who are wearing clear masks, students who are wearing clear masks, or they're outside for speech therapy services wherever possible. We have just a small number of, of parents or caregivers that have, have supplied notes from doctors attesting to you know, a medical and behavioral challenge. And so we, we are working closely with those families to be responsive to those, to those notes. Sometimes it takes some time just to, you know, you have a little bit of back and forth between the administration and the family, just to make sure that we, we understand the child's needs. But, you know, we, we definitely will try to work with families if there are any academic or behavioral or medical challenges associated with wearing a mask. Cause I don't know if that answers your question or if there's anything else.
I don't think you save me anything to talk about, but you know, and it's a small bunch of students that, a group of students that really benefit from that kind of like articulation and pragmatically kind of reading my face kind of thing. So I'm, it's a smaller group, but we feel that the masks are working well and they, you know, like Mike said, try to take them outside. And so workarounds all over the place. Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this point? Gianna?
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, just as I was looking at my notes, it just occurred to me to ask now. And thanks for all this update, Superintendent. I just, I, I know of a couple of families, including my own, who I, I kept my child home out of an abundance of caution. But it took a little while to get a rapid test. It was like difficult. So I'm wondering, did we talk at all about like, like what the attendance policy, like special circumstances in keeping a child home with an abundance of caution? Like what's that going to look like on, on students' attendance records?
Yeah, so a, a child who's absent, we have to report that child is not being present. But that shouldn't be a barrier to sustaining their learning. And so that's actually, we, we're going to talk a little bit about that further down on the agenda and how we can support students who are either quarantined or absent. But it, you know, for, for many families, a child being marked absent is something that is concerning. And yet really it's just a record of whether or not, for legal purposes, whether or not the child is, is present or not. And so the, really the, what we want to focus on is how can we sustain learning for those children who are absent? I think one of the things that I could get for the committee at your next meeting, because you have me curious now, is just a, a general attendance report. What is, what's daily in-person attendance looking like this year compared to a sort of pre-pandemic year? So I don't have that information at my fingertips, but that, that might help us kind of understand how many families are, are doing the right thing, you know, and being conservative and keeping their child home if they're, if the children are symptomatic. When we get the, the diagnostic testing up and running, the intention of that program is to provide symptomatic test, testing to symptomatic individuals who develop symptoms during the school day. It wouldn't necessarily be for families to sort of a, why don't you go on into school and see what happens and see if, you know, go, go to the nurse's office and take the test. hey, why don't you go on into school and see what happens and see if, you know, go to the nurse's office and take the test. I think we're still going to count on families to be judicious and make those decisions to keep their children home if they're experiencing symptoms. So I hope that answers your question, but I know we're going to come to some of that. We'll also address later on in the agenda tonight.
Yeah, thanks Superintendent. And maybe at that time too, like in Springfield, we have certain codes for absences. So I don't know if there's a, you know, stayed home to test for COVID code, you know, just because I'm thinking, you know, could be looking at a good number of kids each week, especially with flu season coming and, you know, being outside with sports. And so just something I think we need to. Yeah, and you said it best. So thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions right now? All right, I think we should roll on Marty and maybe stop the screen sharing.
There we go. So a couple of things, I wanted to circle back on lunch. I know we had some good conversation on that at your last meeting. And sort of making sure we're providing, you know, a rich experience for kids despite the distancing that we have. So again, K-8 is at six feet and 912 is at less than six feet. And you know, the concern is that, you know, our children sort of isolated. Our administrators are making an extra effort to make sure that every kid has an opportunity to, you know, eat with a friend. And even some of the desks have been rearranged to make it a little more welcoming. And so with the, with outdoor dining, our administrators are, you know, the weather's been really favorable. So we've been taking advantage of that. Extra picnic tables at most of the schools, many of the schools. And so that's expanded capacity outdoors for us as well. So it's on, it's certainly on the radar screen of our administrators, but they're reporting to us that kids are happy and able to connect with friends as they make their way to lunch in the lunch line and, you know, through outdoor dining where the distancing requirements are not quite as strict. So we, I did ask, I think one, a committee member had asked us to ask the Board of Health to review the distance standard that we have for our K-8, pre-K to eight students. The Board of Health itself chose not to weigh in on that question. They felt it was more of a school administrative operational matter. However, we did talk to officials that, you know, sort of worked for the Board of Health. Our town nurse, the health director, and our contact tracing coordinator, and they all were universally in favor of us keeping that distance standard that we have at the elementary level, at the K-8 level rather, of six feet. Again, the intention is to ensure that children are not subject to quarantine because of a lunchtime exposure. And that really needs to be, in our view, the overarching goal. So we're not, you know, we always want to review and reconsider everything in light of the, you know, new guidance or new information, but right now we felt like we needed to stick to that standard. But, you know, certainly on radar screen of our administrators to make sure that they, you know, make that as rich and engaging experience as possible for kids at lunch. So I don't have any questions on that.
Mary, go ahead.
This is not a question, but just a comment. And I'm not sure if Marty mentioned new picnic tables, but at the PAC meeting at Long Meadow High School, Mr. Landers did talk about how LPVAC is making the new picnic tables for our high school. And I just thought that was a neat connection between.
Yeah, thanks for that prompt. That's awesome. And I don't know if Mr. Mas has any additional information on this. So CARE TECH is the, is the technical education program over at the LPVAC. And so in their woodworking classes, they're putting together some picnic tables for us. I'm not sure. I don't know if any have been delivered yet or are they still under construction? Two delivered. All right. So and what's the, do you know how many they're bringing to us ultimately or? So thank you for that. And Ms. Keane is our LPVAC representative. So I appreciate you prompting us with that. That's great.
Suzie, go ahead.
I don't want to put him on the spot, but our senior representative, perhaps you have a plan to address the lunch issue during your remarks, but I thought we'd give you an opportunity to talk about it now if you have any updates.
To update the lunch situation, I'm after the actual meeting. We had discussed previously about the lunch tables coming in. I did have a meeting with Mr. Landers. He had told me about the tables that were being built by LPVAC, which I thought was completely awesome. From a day-to-day side of it, I am seeing, obviously with this decent weather we've been having, more students are going outside, especially with this additional seating, it is making it more accessible to other students. So the problem seems to be being corrected, which is ultimately great. That's all I have to say about that.
Excellent. Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. I just wanted to share, and thanks, Mary, for inspiring the idea that we can share other stuff besides questions. When I was at Williams on Friday, I just want to appreciate the efforts of the staff at Williams and especially the custodians because the cafeteria was spotless. The floor was glistening. But what particularly stood out and to myself and we had, you know, all the other parents and guardians that were there were saying the same thing, was the organizational piece of the cafeteria, which is the primary eating site, and then the auditorium, which is the secondary eating, and like, you know, they had the sign-in sheets and like, it was just, which may seem like a small thing, but for me who works in a school, it was exceptionally well done, well organized, very clean. And so I just wanted to appreciate the folks at Williams.
Other questions or comments right now? All right, let's move on. Marty has his next update, the MCAS.
Couple of things. So I anticipate that if the committee is interested, we could make ourselves available to provide you with an MCAS report at your next meeting. We'll have to talk about, you know, the density of the agenda. MCAS reports were, statewide MCAS reports were released last week. We will be issuing the student reports. So I don't know if we have a date on that. I'm sorry to put you on the spot before. Okay. You were on mute there. I don't know if you want to, you were on mute.
I think the state is shipping them at the end of the month.
Families will receive their individual.
They ship them here and then we send them out to schools and schools mail them out. So it'll be a little while.
You know, we saw the at the state level and frankly here in Long Meadow, the MCAS results confirmed what we had expected and that is that learning was disrupted. And we, you know, we saw generally the declines that we saw mirrored the declines that happened across the state. But there are some areas that we look forward to reporting to you on that that maybe ought to be the focus of some improvement efforts. So we're still sort of disaggregating those MCAS reports. And, you know, we could provide you with a full report at your next meeting. If you have particular things that you would like us to report on, just let us know and we'll try to put that together. You don't have to do that now, but at any point, if you want to shoot Sue or I an email, we can try and get you the MCAS-related information that you need.
Thanks, Marty. Suzie.
So I'm trying to figure out how to characterize my comment around this one. I mean, the school committee went on record last year with a letter sent in support of the Superintendent's Association, the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association, to, you know, forego testing administration last year. And so I think while, while I understand it's an important part of, you know, state accountability and educational accountability, I think we know what we know and we spent, you know, kids spent a week where they could have had instruction, sitting and doing a test that really wasn't, in my opinion, necessary. That being said, I guess I just want to limit how much time and energy we spend analyzing it, given the fact that we have localized assessments here that we've used to kind of check out where our students are and where they fell, fallen, and where they've also shined and continued learning. So I guess, I guess that's where I'm coming from on this. I don't want, you know, a full deep, I personally, I'm only speaking for myself as one committee member. I don't want a ton of time and energy spent on looking back at what happened when we already know what happened. Let's move forward on what's going into the next school year and the promise that we're going to implement for our kids with the new district improvement plan and some new approaches to teaching and learning. Those are my comments.
I greatly appreciate you reminding us that the committee had taken that position last year. And I think it's a, it's very helpful to hear. And I know that, you know, at a time when our educators are working to reestablish learning routines, to have the MCAS report come out at this time is, it raises the blood pressure and the worry metered for a lot of people. So not only, you know, do I agree that state testing should have been put on pause, the release of the results right now is really difficult. It comes at a difficult time. I think, you know, what, what our administrators are reporting and we're seeing this across the country, I've seen, you know, sort of national reports on this, is just a lot of children who just didn't have regular routines, you know, trying to readjust to, you know, five days a week of daily schooling. And so a lot of kids are just trying to learn how to, learn how to learn, learn how to be students. So that's, that's really primary, you know, to make kids, to give kids that comfort level.
Thank you, Suzie. Thank you, Marty. Let's go to Mary and then we'll go to Gianna.
I've been reflecting a lot about the MCAS because in my time in education, the test has dramatically changed. You know, the Common Core has come out, the revised Common Core has come out. We have our Massachusetts framework. And we've seen the task evolve from a legacy test to next generation. The types of the questions are different. And the test that we gave last year did not reflect the learning that was happening because students were learning different things. They were still attempting to, teachers were still attempting to teach our standards-based curriculum, but there had to be some additional learning that happened with technology, time management, advocacy, even emailing your teachers. And even correspondence, we have a whole speaking and listening section of our standards that had to really be thought about in a very different way when you were not in person with your classmates. So I do think that we were casting students with a tool that was not really reflective of what was happening in the classroom. So I really agree with you, Suzie, and I, I would encourage, you know, us to take our MCAS scores and families at home who might be concerned with that. I feel very confident that we will, we will see our MCAS scores rise. If you have families, if you have families who are concerned about maybe a dip from last year, I just think that we need to take a big step back and look at the whole picture.
I just wanted to say also, speaking for myself, but totally in line with Suzie and what Mary were saying. And also, you know, just to build a little bit on what you were saying, Suzie, in terms of looking forward, I think when it's time for us to talk about our goals in the district, when you make that presentation, I think, you know, and I think Kevin brought this up last time in terms of, you know, the interruption that did happen to the learning. Like you said, Suzie, we know it happened, but now looking forward and having those goals and having, you know, measurable objectives to look forward to. Yeah, so, thank you.
Such a, I just have to say it's a really helpful conversation to us because coincidentally, on our administrative agenda for our Wednesday meeting is a discussion of MCAS and sort of, you know, what is our story? What is our message? How do we want to approach the scores this year? How do you, you know, what's, what's an appropriate approach? What's a healthy approach to MCAS? And so the feedback that we're receiving tonight is, I think, will definitely shape our discussion tomorrow and shape how we talk about MCAS scores with families, with children and with our staff as well. So thank you so much for that.
And I know we have a couple more comments, Marty. So before we move on, let's go to Nicole and then.
I just wanted to echo also what Suzie and Mary and Gianna have all said as well, that as we're looking at the scores to remind ourselves that this is one small component of what happened over the course of the year and that this is not a test that was ever designed to assess learning losses and gains during a global pandemic. It's, it's not a tool that is created for that purpose. So we can't expect it to give us data that it was not designed to properly assess. So we have already put in place in the district, our teachers and staff members and administrators have been hard at work putting together assessments to see where our students have gained, what they have needed help catching up on what they have maybe lost, what interruptions there were and how we can get them on track for moving forward in wherever they are in the learning process. And those are the test scores and those are the assessments and the measurements that I would be most interested in as well.
Thank you, Nicole. Bronwyn.
I just want to say, I don't know if it was just me, but I could hear Mary and Gianna were talking at the same time. Did anyone else hear that?
Yes, it's happening for us at home. Mary's responses are very delayed. So when she's, she's still talking for us when other people are beginning again.
Okay, for Diane too?
Yes.
Okay.
When, yeah, when Mary is speaking, I should probably wait a little bit.
Right. And I guess if one of us cares, we can let you know. As far as the assessments, Marty, I was just thinking, anything that, you know, the admin team puts together in terms of like steps and goals in order to improve, because we have all that eye-ready stuff. You know, MCAS can be used as one thing, but I think that there's a lot of other data that can be used. Maybe from last year and already probably taken from this year. So from those, you know, reading tests that they give to elementary schools, all those things put together. Just to give like the whole picture and then kind of like a game plan for, you know, moving forward from there, I guess. Thanks.
All right, can I keep going?
So I did want to just add one thing from my perspective before you move on, Marty. So I really value everybody's input on this because I think everybody's spot on. I think it's the only things I would want to add. Number one, I think I'd be interested if anything surprises any of our administrators. I agree that everybody has said it's not surprising that we didn't do as well. Nobody did as well. It's not surprising at all. One thing that I think is a positive way to look at it is it really highlights the importance and value of in-person education. And that's what I wanted. I mean, if the results came back as like, yeah, we're doing just as well. During the crazy pandemic, it would have said like, well, why are we doing all this work in person? It's very clear why we're doing the work in person, right? And this just is another example of why we need to do everything we have to to keep our kids in school and keep our teachers in school. So.
Yeah. So, yeah, like I said, just a super helpful conversation. So I appreciate all the feedback on that and. Yeah, so, yeah, like I said, uh, just a a super helpful conversation. So I appreciate all the feedback on that and, uh, we'll we'll be in touch. Kevin and I will talk about sort of how to approach this at a, at an upcoming meeting for you and and the community. A couple of things that are in your packet and then I'll, and then I'll wrap it up. Uh, one is, uh, this, I gave you a copy of a, um, little pamphlet that we had put together for the Long Meadow Pride Festival, a credit, uh, shout out to Shelley Warren, uh, and a few others who worked on on this pamphlet, and it's a kind of representation of uh, the work that we do across the district to support LGBTQ plus students. So, uh, thanks to the team that put that together. Uh, shout out to, uh, Dawn Stryker, uh, is a science teacher at the high school and, uh, Dawn had invited me to, uh, her engineering class, uh, where uh, Dr. Nick Massa was was speaking about, uh, uh, optics and, uh, photonics. And it was a fascinating class, uh, where Dr. Massa, who's a Long Meadow resident, uh, did a number of demonstrations. And the reason I highlight it is, I I think it's a, an example of sort of, uh, our teachers being committed to, um, uh, developing career education, uh, among students. And, uh, at the, in the classroom was Erin Corbett, who was the, uh, career education coordinator at the high school. She, uh, was part of Dr. Massa's visit, uh, and Dawn wanted to, uh, show the students sort of some pathways that, uh, engineering could, uh, lead them towards. And, uh, it was a great way for students to see the connection between what they're learning in classroom and real-life application. So it sort of, a a lot of what we like to see in in, uh, in our classrooms sort of came together at that moment with the career education, with a community partnership, and with some really engaging, uh, teaching for our kids. So thank you, Dr. Massa. Thank you to Dawn Stryker for inviting me and, uh, I learned a little bit about laser technology that I didn't know before, so. Uh, finally, and last thing in your packet, there is a a letter that I had, uh, signed off on. It was to support the, I'm sorry.
Hold on, we have a question before we go to the next topic. Gianna, go ahead.
So sorry, Superintendent, to interrupt you like that. And thank you, Kevin, for seeing my hand. Um, I I just wanted to go back to the, to the MCAS, um, and you touched on it a little bit, Superintendent, but I just wanna like really emphasize it. When y'all are are talking about it and thinking about it, um, in terms of the messaging especially, can you just make sure people understand? You know, can you try and alleviate any stresses or, you know, social, emotional? You know, if people are looking at the scores and, you know, are 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 nervous about what they mean, um, maybe some way to alleviate those, those stressors and those concerns, um, because this is just like Nicole said, one piece. And, um, so, thank you.
And well said. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so final item, uh, uh, in your packet is a a letter, uh, supporting the town's application for a municipal energy technical assistance grant. And this is to do a our retro commissioning study of center school, the energy systems at center school with an eye towards identifying how some capital investments could result in center school being, uh, more up to date and more energy efficient. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that. Uh, the town's application for that, um, it's essentially a a really robust, in-depth equity or excuse me, uh, energy audit, uh, of of center schools, um, uh, HVAC systems and, uh, heating systems. So we'll, we'll keep you posted, but I'm I'm excited to hear that the town is pursuing that grant. That's all I have. Thanks for your patience with a a lengthy report tonight.
Any additional questions or comments for Marty? And Marty, it was refreshing that that wasn't all COVID update. Excellent. Um, school committee chair report, uh, I just have a couple of items. I I'm gonna continue to say this every meeting. Thank you to everybody who is making it possible for our students to be back in person. Um, just the fact that everybody is following the rules and everybody's going out and getting vaccinated, staying home when they're not feeling well, um, just thank you. Uh, it's great to hear the reports about back-to-school nights and all the stuff that we all wanna do. And the other reason that's possible is because everybody's doing their part. So thank you for everybody being a part of this community and making it possible. The only other thing I wanted to alert the committee to, so I had a discussion with Mark Strange today, who's the chair of the select board. And on our next meeting agenda, there's going to be an agenda item about the proposed changes to the town charter. And in that, um, proposed change to the town charter, there are a couple of items that pertain to the school committee. And, uh, it has to do with votes that we would take with respect to the superintendent. And there's a discrepancy between the proposed charter and our policy documents. And so just as a heads up to folks, like, that is going to come in two weeks' time. And we are going to make a recommendation to the select board about whether we like the proposed changes or we don't. There's nothing to discuss. It's not on the agenda for tonight, but I just wanna let folks know, like, that is coming and we need to give them a recommendation because the select board will vote on those proposed changes at their October eighteenth meeting. So we need to come to a decision in two weeks' time about whether we support them or not. So just as a heads up, that will be coming. And that's all that I have. Dagan, you're up.
Awesome. All right. Well, I actually have somewhat, not as long as Dr. O'Shea's point may be sometimes. But, um, one, as Kevin, as the chairman spoke about the sports calendar, it is great, especially for, you know, athletes like myself who play both varsity and JV levels. I'm running around all week trying to find out when and where my games are. So for parents and for athletes, that's the same. It's a great thing to have. Another thing I wanna touch on, the the LHS student body got an email last week from Principal Landers about parking made free. And then I saw a school committee under there. I was like, they did something awesome. Thank you guys very much. The student body who purchased parking passes, very much appreciate it. And those who haven't purchased one yet, um, thank you guys as well. Um, another one thing I wanna talk about is LHS community involvement. Obviously, we had many students go to the Pride Festival. He represented there. Um, volleyball had, had, um, volunteered, uh, volunteered slash donated. Uh, Key Club, which is our community service club at LHS, is starting up. They're getting their community service hours in, getting ready to get back in the community after this long COVID break that they weren't able to do very much. And then finally, for community involvement would be music on the lawn. So the LHS usually, mostly just lyrics, but most of the LHS music community will be at Storrs Library performing, you know, getting some community involvement through music. I mean, as a music student myself, music is very important. I think it's very important for for the community to see, the sometimes not seen all the times and our, our concerts are relatively small. Maybe they don't see the LHS music tour all the time, but they can see these musicians and these musicians can give credit for their work. Um, at LHS, our student faculty advisory council, our SPEC meeting, was held of last week. Just an update from that. So the class of twenty twenty-two, the senior class, has decided on their class play. It's going to be Shrek. We're gonna see how that goes. I'll be in attendance, so we'll see how that goes. Um, the other, the class of twenty twenty-three, be my own class, is having a blanket sale, stadium blanket sale. If I, I know your, your son is in SPEC, Mary, and also he probably hears about this all the time since we have it running on the announcement. Um, warm stadium blankets, if anyone wants one, please let me know. Um, class of twenty twenty-four is doing a lot of fundraising. Obviously, they were the freshman class during our majority COVID year, so they didn't have many funds to start up this new in-person year. That's what they're really focusing on. And then we finally got to welcome the officers of the class of twenty twenty-five. They seem to be a great bunch of individuals. And again, I know your, your son is a member of their officer board, so can't wait to work with all of them. And the LHS music fruit sale is gonna be coming up. You'll see LHS music students running around Long Meadow, asking you guys to buy oranges and everything like that. It does really help support the LHS music program and all, really all the music programs in the district. So if I'm running around and see me in town, make sure to beep your horn at me, you know, thank you, thank you, Dagan, all that good stuff. And finally, I'm talking very fast, um, the October, we have a meeting on October twelfth, I believe. Uh, that is when myself and my entire entire advisory committee will be here to discuss with all of you our major concerns, which we will, we obviously have to scan our student body before that meeting, but we really look forward to seeing you all and working with you all on that meeting on the big, larger student body concerns of my entire committee here, representing of Charles, Katie, and Natty. So really looking forward to that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Dagan. And one thing, so it's great to hear everything that's going on with, I mean, this is the way it should be. So thank you for for reminding us all the great stuff that's going on. And and I do wanna just say to everybody listening and to the the students especially, the parking pass issue was the students. Max Tanushkin and the Student Advisory Council last year pushed really hard on that. And it's due to them that we were enlightened and recognized that, yeah, it was the right thing to do. So I I'm really happy that that happened. And again, that was a student initiative. So, yeah, thank you. Anything, anyone else for Dagan? All right. Um, other reports, LPVEC.
Uh, yes, we do have an LB, um, VEC update. I just wanna, uh, Nicole, I can see on my screen. Does my voice sound okay to you? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, okay, so, uh, we did receive a director's update. The COVID protocols are in place at LPVEC. Uh, they gave an enrollment update. There are four hundred and ninety students this year. Last year, um, we had four hundred and sixty, so this is up. Um, they're interested in expanding enrollment to, um, include more freshmen. Five of the seven districts send freshmen. We do not. And one of the obstacles to that is graduation requirements. And so that was a discussion that took place. Uh, we received a special education update, um, from Amy Drake, their, um, special ed, uh, director. Uh, she did talk a little bit about some concerns for our special education population, including, um, attendance, SCL, and trauma. Uh, she gave a shout out to their new sensory room, um, which is, um, part of the Twain program. Uh, we also received a financial update. Uh, we renewed, uh, reviewed our financial reports and received an award for excellence in financial reporting. And I guess this is the eighth year in a row that we've received that. Uh, so it was a briefer meeting than my last one, um, and things seem to be going well there. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, the next report is energy and sustainability, and that's me. Uh, and and really the only thing to report Marty already did, which is, uh, the work on trying to, you know, get the grant to to study center school. And and our next meeting is coming up um, next week, and we're gonna be talking about more grants for green community um, activities, and I'll I'll keep you updated. But the committee is working hard on trying to get these grants to to help the the town and and thankfully, some of them are related to the schools. Um, Seal, Gianna, is that you?
Thank you, Kevin. I just want to again, thank you as our chairperson and superintendent and the committee for adding, uh, SEAL Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, uh, to the, uh, regular school committee meetings. I think it's important that we keep uh, reinforcing and and raising awareness for, um, not just SEAL itself, although please, I would encourage you to visit the SEAL website and reach out to the SEAL leaders. It's sealma.org. Um, but again, just to keep raising awareness, uh, in particular, as we're talking about uh, e- equity and inclusivity, um, that we have, um, a a a lot of students who have different needs, and we wanna make sure that we're, you know, that we're hearing about those needs, that we're addressing those needs. And, um, again, you don't have to have a child who, um, receives special services to participate in SEALs. It's about a community coming together um, to support all of our students in in differentiated ways. So I would encourage you to check out sealma.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Gianna. Um, Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, I was just, uh, Mary mentioned the LPVAC that, um, we don't send ninth graders. Um, Marty or Kevin or the committee, I'm not sure. Is that something we can talk about in the future? I, I feel like a future agenda item, maybe? Just to understand why, um, things like that. Thanks.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I I I wanna do a little additional digging on that. I I think we we send, I I know ninth graders have participated in CTEC, but Mary's correct that, you know, kind of preparing students to graduate and preparing students for, they could say at MCAS, as a graduation requirement, it's always been a a hurdle for us. But uh, we do, um, occasionally have some ninth grade students, but perhaps this year, I'll, we'll, we'll check on some numbers and we could put on a a future agenda if that's of interest to the committee.
So we have ninth graders that go to the CTEC program?
I I believe there are, are, I'm actually saying, Dagan, confirming that. There are a limited number that go each year, so we'd have to get some specific numbers on that.
Just for the future, just curious. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Bronwyn. I I definitely agree that that makes sense for us to learn a little bit more about that in the future. So thank you for for pushing that. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
Could I mention, I I was thinking, you know, we've, we've talked about some student showcases or student presentations. It might be, it'd be great to have, uh, Career Tech represented as as one of those presentations to the school committee as a way to kind of, uh, educate the community on the great work, you know, that happens over at Career Tech. They have some great shops. The facility's beautiful and the kids are really engaged in some really authentic, meaningful career preparation work, so we can talk about that.
I think that sounds great, Marty. Yeah, thank you. Mary, go ahead.
Um, I'm just reminded of something else that wasn't really part of the LPVEC meeting, but we did receive an email with an update about transportation, and I believe that went to the entire school committee. But um, just regarding, uh, the difficulties in staffing with transportation and how this has resulted in some longer bus rides for some students. And, um, in the event that the community, the community isn't aware of that, that has been an ongoing um, issue across, you know, the state and potentially the country. Bus drivers are difficult to come by and they're working hard to, um, get students where they need to be on time. And I thought we should mention that, too.
Definitely. Thank you, Mary. All right, I think we are going to move on to subcommittee reports. Uh, and we have, uh, several items from the finance subcommittee. So the finance subcommittee met on Tuesday, September twenty-first. Uh, and we bring the following items forward for the full committee's consideration. And again, just as a reminder, on that subcommittee, uh, Jamie is the chair of that, and Bronwyn and I are the other members. Um, and Tom is usually our fearless leader on that group. So Tom, do you mind, uh, kicking us off here?
Thank you, Kevin. Um, so as Kevin indicated, there are a number of items on tonight's agenda for your consideration. Uh, the first is the, uh, general fund report for FY twenty-one. So this would be the allocation the school department receives from the town, uh, at the town meeting each year and approval of our operation. So, um, it reflects the support the school committee had of our ever-changing needs in FY twenty-one as, uh, plans change throughout the years, uh, with staffing and, um, mitigation strategies to address, uh, COVID concerns. Um, the report shows that there is a balance of three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, seventy, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, at this point, fiscal year twenty-one is closed, so there, we cannot use it to address needs. Um, you may recall back in, uh, January or so of uh, fiscal year twenty-one, the school committee did provide some approval for use of some funds at that time. So those funds would be reflected in here as expenditures that were incurred in FY twenty-one. Um, if the school committee votes this, the money would revert back to the town. And then usually at the town meeting, uh, in November, the town would take action on moving money, uh, either towards, uh, free cash, uh, operational stabilization, or for other projects that, um, might exist within, uh, the community. So, um, uh, the community. So um, there is a recommended motion for authorization to turn the balance back for F Y twenty one.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorized the turnback of three hundred and twenty one thousand seventy five dollars and seventy seven cents of end of year funds in F Y twenty one, as outlined in the F Y twenty one general fund budget report dated nine, ten, twenty twenty one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's the, the only thing I wanna say is um, is Tom, thank you. Um, we all know how hard you work and it was a really challenging year last year with everything coming at you. And the fact that we came out with this much left over, I think is a testament to your leadership. Um, and so thank you. And and again, as a reminder to folks, we had a, an even bigger turnback the year before. Um, and so I think it's just a, a testament to the leadership that we have in the district that, you know, we're able to to do our, do great work and still turn money back to the town when all the dust settles. And again, I know it was a challenging year, Tom. So thank you for for all your hard work there. Um, all right, we have to vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, Tom, next up.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, the next item is a informational report. So uh, this is our F Y twenty one revolving account report. Uh, this reflects accounts that um, operate but are not necessarily budgeted in our um, annual budgets. Uh, for example, the athletic revolving account, the school food service account are uh, some of the large accounts that um, operate outside of the budget. They receive revenue and incur expenses. And so this report would be our, the final F Y twenty one report. Um, and there are balances, but I I just wanna note that even though those amounts reflect the end of year, there are expenses that we would incur. Um, for instance, in the school choice fund, we we already have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of um, expenditures or encumbrances against that balance. So it might appear as a large amount, but it's not reflective of what um, known expenses we've incurred at the beginning of the year. Um, the circuit breaker account is uh, funds we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in support of special ed students uh, and costs that the district incurs related to the services and support that we provide them. And again, um, every year we use those, uh, we do budget some of those funds to support uh, special education costs. Um, so this is just again, a a reflection of the activity from what was budgeted, how much revenue was received, specific to each fund. The expenditures that we incurred related to those activities in the balance as of June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty one. So it's informational. Happy to answer any questions now or down the road if anybody has any questions. Um, please feel free to reach out to me.
Questions for Tom? I, the the only thing, Tom, I was hoping you could just speak to a little bit. I know you said this at the subcommittee meeting, but you know, just how last year was a crazy year with respect to athletics and lunch. And looking forward, it it seems like we're anticipating back to a more normal year. And so I I think if anybody looks at this report in detail, like last year, it just seems like what happened and it was like, cuz it was a crazy year. And so next year, it seems like this report will look like a more normal report. Is that fair way to characterize it?
Yeah, I think it's fair. Um, you may recall, we did um, we did reduce or refund athletic two fees during the year as, especially in the fall and winter seasons. They were modified seasons, so we refunded money. Um, we still incurred uh, costs that we normally have to run those programs, maybe even more costs because of transportation um, and uh, additional uh, safety equipment and supplies. So I do hope and expect that things will um, look more normal this year. I would say on food service with the free lunch program being offered to all students, we are seeing an increase in participation than pre-COVID participation. So I think that's a good sign. Hopefully it'll continue as the year progresses. Um, but I think, yeah, hopefully next year we'll see more normal reporting in terms of revenues and expenditures related to these revolving accounts.
And and one thing you reminded us of is that like, there was no, there were no tickets sold to any game last year. And so again, it's a, it's another example of how things are starting to return to normal. And and that's one really good sign that we're gonna be able to pay to attend events this year, which is gonna be great. So uh, any questions for Tom on this? All right, let's roll on to our next one.
Uh, the next item is a uh, a memo outlining our grant awards at this time for the F Y twenty two budget. Um, so usually around this time each year, uh, we tried, we present to you the grants and the award amounts. Uh, at least the initial award amounts, they most certainly are subject to change uh, during the course of the year. But these are the amounts of the awarded grants we have to date. So there's uh, over three million dollars. Um, when we're developing the budget each year, we we make an assumption in regards to the amount that we're we're gonna receive. It's usually based on uh, the prior year's allocation. Um, you know, sometimes we're close, sometimes we receive more or less than what we anticipated. But there are four new grants that are on this list, and uh, those are the uh, the fund codes two, four, two, four through two, four, two, seven. Um, the two S R grants, so S R two and S R three, which uh, the superintendent presented um, a plan on how to use those last, I believe in the spring. And then two additional grants from the American Rescue Plan related to special education. So there's uh, you know, almost one point eight million dollars in increase or new grants that were not part of our budget that was approved back in June. So um, it most certainly is much higher than previous years by, you know, almost two million dollars more than what we normally get in grant revenue. We do anticipate, especially around the S R three grant, that we will most likely not use up the full allocation in F Y twenty two. It does allow, I believe, for you to use of those funds through, I believe it's September of twenty twenty four. Um, but right now, as part of this process, we're accepting the full amount. We're gonna budget the full amount, but we most certainly can continue using it into F Y twenty three and twenty four if we don't expend it all, which I, we don't have planned for, at least as of right now.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, questions or comments? And and I wonder if, or Gianna, please.
So, uh, thank you, Kevin. And and sorry, Tom, if this is the new grants, did we apply for the, or is that like something that somebody just said, like we were gonna give these, or did you have to apply for this and?
They're they're not competitive grants. The the federal government awarded certain amounts. We do have to apply for them, which is submitting an application and outlining how we're gonna use them. But they're not necessarily competitive where we have to, uh, we're competing with other communities throughout the country for them.
Great. So in in addition to what Kevin said earlier, thank you and the team and everybody for, sure, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. So thank you for that.
And I wonder, um, Tom or Marty, one of you, if, again, I know we've spent a lot of time talking about how that money is going to be spent, but I think it might be a good reminder, especially if folks watching are are new to the conversation of of what our plans are for that money. Cuz I know we spent a lot of time on that. And and again, this doesn't need to be a long thing, but maybe just a brief overview of this is what we have planned to do with that money in in this year.
So the two S R grants, uh, the elementary and secondary emergency relief fund, two and three, as they're uh, titled, is approximately one point six million dollars. And um, like I said, the superintendent presented back in the spring, and I believe we uh, requested fourteen new positions in the F Y twenty two budget and uh, to support uh, instruction. The uh, breakdown is three classroom teachers at center school, uh, three assistant principals, one at each elementary school. Um, three math coaches for the elementary schools, which uh, we have uh, challenges in terms of filling those positions. So they are still vacant at this time. Uh, we also hired some specialists, so two uh, E L A specialist and two math specialist uh, for the middle schools, so one in each building and also a specialist at the high school. So those are all the positions that are included in uh, that are being paid for out of these funds, along with some some summer support for programs uh, for summer uh, learning. And I believe we're also looking at some after school support also to uh, um, help students in terms of uh, where they might have needs. And then there's some additional money for uh, support around COVID mitigation, tent rental, um, uh, some software. There's professional development included in the budget. So it's kind of a a overview of how we anticipate spending the money, at least at this time. Uh, we most certainly will probably be modifying it uh, as time goes on in terms of what our actual expenditures are reflecting.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Um, any other questions for Tom? All right, we have a potential motion.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee accept the F Y twenty two grants as specified on the F Y twenty two grants memo dated nine, ten, twenty twenty one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, let's move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Tom?
So the last item uh, under the finance subcommittee is consideration of a revision to the F Y twenty two budget for uh, some of the grants that you just accepted. So this document uh, outlines five grants that were re- requesting approval to revise the budgeted amounts. Um, in the F Y twenty two budget column, that would reflect the amount that was included in the F Y twenty two approved budget and the line item amount that was uh, authorized. Um, as I indicated, the S R two and S R three grants have no allocation in that column because they were not included. So uh, we would be recognizing the full amount in the revised budget. Uh, the other grants are increasing uh, the allocation in the F Y twenty two budget to the amount that was awarded to us. Um, and also modifying the lines as to where we anticipate we will be spending those funds in F Y twenty two.
Any comments or questions for Tom on this one? We have a potential motion.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved. The budget revision is outlined in the document F Y twenty two grants and special revenues budget revision number one dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Tom, I think we're all set. Thank you so much. Um, policy sub, no report, curriculum sub, no report, evaluation sub, no report. Negotiation subcommittee, just a reminder, the representatives from the negotiation subcommittee are Dr. Bell, Ms. Alan Tuck and Mish one year. Uh, and that's it for those reports. All right, so we're gonna move on to ongoing business, and this is school committee goals. And we are asked to submit goals under school committee's major responsibility areas. Uh, Marty's gonna present the goals submitted by the committee. And and before Marty takes the floor, I just really wanna thank all the committee members for submitting their goals. Um, and I know it's a busy time, and it was great to see everybody submitted their their ideas for goals. And and then a huge shout out to Diane and Marty for taking all of the stuff we submitted and distilling it down with a very short turnaround time. Um, so thank you, Diane. Thank you, Marty, for making something intelligible out of everything that we submitted. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to you, Marty.
Well, everything that came in was very intelligible, uh, and 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 very thorough. So I appreciate that. It looks like Gianna has a question before I I launch here.
Gianna, go ahead.
So sorry again. Thank you, Kevin. Sorry, Superintendent.
Yeah.
Um, I don't even know if this is possible, but is there a way that we could have you present the district plan and goals before we review our school? I just feel like it would be good to see where you all think you're headed. And then we could, cuz we, I mean, I feel like ultimately we wanna align with the district goals. I don't know. I don't know if this is possible or not, but for me, it would make sense if we heard your ideas about the district goals before we have more discussion about the school committee goals.
I'll defer to the committee in terms of rearranging uh, the agenda. I think um, the, the good news is at at our September fourteenth meeting, we had that opportunity to sort of do a sort of goals retreat. And so that conversation shaped is and continues to shape the development of our district improvement plan, which which you may hear about shortly. Um, and and so, and I and I think that that conversation also helped the committee with the latest iteration of the goals that you submitted to Diane and I. So I would say that, you know, they, it's been a iterative back and forth process and and I think we we as an administrative team, had some insight into what the goals of the committee were and and vice versa. So I might, um, I, I think really, the when I think about this, the logical order of things is school committee goals, district goals, and then sort of administrative goals, and then frankly, educated goals. So um, you know, I, but I, I think the good news is all of those things are are clearly lining up. The moon and the stars and the sun are lining up on on all of our goals. And I and I see a lot of alignment emerging. So I'll defer to the committee on on whether you'd you'd rather hear from us first on the emergence of our district improvement plan, or if you'd rather tackle the school committee portion of this first.
And and Gianna, I definitely take your point. Good, sir? Okay. All right. So, Gianna, I definitely take your point. And and Marty and I talked about this. And I think if if our goals were out of alignment with the district improvement plan, we wouldn't be doing them in the same night. Uh, and so I think you can rest assured that what we're gonna talk about is going to be mirrored in what Marty's gonna present in just a minute. Um, so I think that it's all good to take it in the order Marty mentioned, just because there is uh, consistency and overlap.
Thank you. I just was thinking, you know, if we're gonna approve our goals before we hear the, but I'll I'll defer to you all, but uh, kinda like to hear, I get it. All right, thank you.
And and again, I mean, I I think that the way that Marty and his team, I think, thinks about the district improvement plan is to take the goals that we all talked about and then bring them to a little bit more of an implementation level. And so I think because we had that meeting several weeks ago, we were able to just make the process go a little bit faster. Is that a fair way to put it, Marty?
Sorry. Uh, completely. I think we had an opportunity to, you know, to hear what was on the minds of the committee at your September fourteenth meeting and vice versa. So as I reviewed the individual submissions of individual committee members, they they clearly reflected uh, the the emerging district improvement plan goals that you heard about on the fourteenth. So I think I'm comfortable either way. And and, you know, I defer to the committee in terms of the order that you wanna tackle this on.
Anybody else wanna weigh in on the order? Anybody else wanna weigh in on the order of the agenda? All right, I think, I think we'll just take it this way, and, John, I definitely take your point, but I think we're gonna be fine. And I think Bronwyn is jumping back in, so that's a good thing. Excellent. All right, so Marty, do you, do you wanna take it?
Sure. So I'll just sort of set the, get everybody oriented to the documents that you have. So you have in your meeting folder was the documents that were prepared in advance of your September fourteenth meeting. And that was sort of the first iteration of the school committee goals that we had an opportunity to overview. At your September fourteenth meeting, you agreed that you wanted to sort of have a second opportunity to resubmit goals and to have those goals line up with the major functions of the committee, at least that was sort of our takeaway on the fourteenth. And so the committee was kind enough to go back and resubmit goals related to four areas: budget, policy, curriculum. And then finally, the fourth one was communication and community relations. And so there is a document that is in your packet, and there's a hard copy in front of the committee. I'm just showing it visually. It's sort of the landscape-oriented chart that shows the individual submissions of the committee members in those four areas. And what we did was based on your September fourteenth conversation and based on the submissions, the individual submissions, we attempted to sort of distill it down to a single goal document. And so for your consideration is a draft. And it's really just meant to hopefully make your conversation productive and efficient. But it's a draft of a set of school committee goals that reflects the individual submissions that everyone made. And so you have, for your consideration, a set of goals related to budget, policy, curriculum, and then communication and community relations. So if you, if you want, I can go through that, but I think you probably can review it and read it as easily as I could explain it. But if you want me to overview it and orient the committee to it or the community, I'm happy to do that as well. Whatever would be helpful to you.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it from here, Marty, and I think I'll just take it one at a time. I'll read it so that the community can know what it says, and then we can take feedback on each individual set of goals, if people are okay with that. So let's just start with the budgetary goals. Well, let me just read it. So it says, Long Meadow School Committee, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two goals. The Long Meadow School Committee is committed to continuous improvement. In doing so, the committee commits to these goals during the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So we had to fix the date there.
Right. Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. It was so good, Suzie.
Kevin, are you able to put those on the?
And then budgetary goals. The school committee will work with community stakeholders to advocate for, develop, and maintain a fiscally responsible budget that supports. Number one, the implementation of multi-tiered systems of support. Number two, outcomes related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Number three, the health and safety of each member of the learning community. And I would just note, those are not in priority order. They are just the three things that we are committing to. Nicole, go ahead.
I think Bronwyn was wondering if maybe we could put those on the screen so that people can see as you go through them. That would be helpful on my end as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Marty's gonna take care of it.
Just give me a second.
So while Marty is pulling that up, we can definitely continue the discussion if people have things that they want to comment on for those budgetary goals. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Just a small little thing. I don't even know if it's, you know. The school committee will work with, can it be school and community stakeholders? I mean, I guess it's important, but I, you know.
I think that the idea on that was, community stakeholders would include the select board and the finance committee and just, you know, not just the school community, but the broader Long Meadow community. I think that was.
Yeah, that's why I was saying school and community.
Okay.
And community.
School and community. Other comments or questions on the budgetary goals? Suzie, go ahead.
Don't ever put me in a position to wordsmith. Sorry. So, y'all, this is great, though, because it does really reflect the sentiment. I was just looking for some, I think qualifiers, you know, like qualitative components of this. So when I look at number one and I see the implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, I'm really aiming, you know, for me, my orientation to this work is, yes, our budget needs to support that, but it needs to support the successful creation of and implementation. So, because we're not quite at a point where we have even created the multi-tiered systems of support, and you can speak a little bit more about that, Dr. O'Shea. I know we're in the process, but I think we just wanna put some qualifiers on this that, you know, it's one thing to implement it, it's another thing entirely to really like like establish an understanding which you will do in your district improvement plan of what successful creation and implementation looks like, I would assume. And then, under number two, the districts.
Could interrupt, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I'm hoping Diane, if you're able to sort of track some of the suggestions here.
I'm writing it on my sheet too, so I can give it to her after.
And I don't know that, I don't, just procedurally, I don't know that you need to. I think if there's a lot of heads nodding and general consent, we can make the changes and then vote on it. Maybe goal by goal after Diane captures the changes that are suggested.
Yeah, I know I'm noting the changes as well, and I'm happy to read those back
Okay.
and vote on each individual set of goals. I agree that that makes sense. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine, and I appreciate the opportunity to share. So for number two, I had the district's priorities for and outcomes related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, because those priorities, I'm assuming, will be articulated in the district improvement plan. Just trying to be, and again, this was helpful because in the retreat, you know, I remember Mary saying, like, how can we get to a point where we're more measurable? And so the measurement will come when we have the combined documents, right? The school committee goals and the district improvement plan will be able, the measurement obviously is, okay, we're gonna allocate budget for, you know, this. But the implementation, you know, has to be of quality and related to priorities that are clearly articulated. So those are my two comments on that one.
Thank you, Suzie. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. The way it's written, I'm just wondering, does it seem like these are the only three things that we're gonna talk about a budget for? Is there like, you know what I'm saying? Like, do we need to put like including but not limited to, you know, these three things or?
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying. I mean, to me, I think the budgetary goals, I view it as sort of above and beyond sort of the general stuff that we have to budget for, right? Like, I don't think we have to budget for, like, we are gonna make sure that there's enough budget for three elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. Right? Like, to me, this is above and beyond sort of the standard baseline that we're gonna do. Because if we don't view it that way, I think we get bogged down in saying we're gonna do our job, right? And I think this is sort of above and beyond. That's the way I look at it. But again, that's just me.
I would agree. Sorry.
So I guess with that then, cause now that you're saying that, now I hear you. But then why wouldn't we either have nothing or, like, I just don't wanna be limited to these three these three items in terms of the budget. But if you all aren't reading it that way, like, to me, I'm reading this as this is it for the budget, these three items.
I feel like in our time on the committee, we've always responded to needs that arise. I mean, I don't think we can anticipate things that haven't happened, right? I mean, if you think back to before COVID started, one of our goals wasn't to respond to a pandemic. But we did, cause we had to, right? So, I mean, I think, to me, this isn't, we're saying these are the only things we can do. I think we're saying, these are our priorities right now, as we think about what the year's gonna look like. But we always can respond, and I feel like we always have. So I don't think these goals should be seen of as limiting us, but these are the things that we're planning to focus on. That's how I would think about it. All right, so we have lots of hands up. Let's go to Nicole, and then Bronwyn, and then Suzie.
I would agree with your focus there, priorities for. I think when I consider goals, and especially for those of us who work in the educational field, goals are designed to be your areas of focus for growth. Your areas of focus for prioritized growth specifically. And those don't negate the fact that you'll, of course, be doing the one hundred other things that are already happening in your day-to-day functioning of your job, and the same applies here. Rather, those goals give you a focus for what that growth is going to look like over the course of the year. So we know all the things that have to happen as a school committee in order for things to continue functioning. And then these are our focused areas of growth that we wanna bring some extra attention to. And again, that's my perspective on that, anyway.
Thank you, Nicole. Bronwyn, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I, so I have the goals of the people who submitted them in front of me. I see the health and safety in a lot of people's goals. But I'm trying to figure out. We do need to add something else. I agree with Suzie to the second one. Because a budget that supports outcomes related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think she said, what did you say, implementation, maybe, Suzie? Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Successful creation and implementation?
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was referring to the first one. The second one was the district's priorities and outcomes related to.
Okay. I just saw a lot of other things in here that, like, more than two times or something that aren't on the goals. So I'm just confused by that. I don't know if the first one, the implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, is supposed to like encompass everyone's goals related to budget. But I don't know that it's, for me, it's not specific enough. And I don't know that those three goals. I mean, maybe I'm missing some, or I'm not sure. I don't know if these three goals are exactly what was said with the document I'm looking at. So I'm just having trouble putting those two things together.
Maybe Marty can speak to that, since Marty was our distiller in chief for that.
Thank you, yes. Bronwyn, you're correct, that MTSS isn't specifically mentioned. What, the reason I use that phrase, two reasons. One is, in the budget-related goals, many committee members talked about addressing, supporting district goals. And additionally, when I looked at Mary's submission, and it seemed to get some attention and interest at your September fourteenth meeting, it was, you know, making sure we have that infrastructure of coaches, making sure that we're being data-driven, that we have strategies for differentiation. That it seemed to me that that really was reflective of the sort of the tiered supports that are, that, you know, as far as our district improvement plan, we see as being critical to success of kids. So it was a way to sort of capture the committee's interest in making sure we have a budget that is specifically tied to district improvement plans and district goals.
I just don't, I get you're trying to make it short, but at the same time, there's some really, really good ideas on the paper that I'm looking at, that people submitted, that I wish was, we were a little bit more specific about. And, I mean, the MTSS, I get you wanting to add that. I mean, no one had that in their goals. I guess, cause everyone maybe wanted to be more specific. I know we can't include everything, but maybe similar to what Gianna said, maybe this is a little too broad. Like, the first one, to me, is much, much too broad. The second one, I think, needs to be more specific. And the third one makes sense to me, and that's the one that I see almost everyone put on here.
So Bronwyn, do you have a suggestion for how you want to revise these?
No, I just didn't know if people have these, the documents in front of them. And they're looking at those. I was wondering if they're seeing something I'm not. I mean, it's very possible that, I mean, I printed these out. Kevin, yours aren't on the one that I printed out? But I remember.
I hope they are. But, so I know for some of mine, like, they weren't under the budget category. They ended up in other categories. Right? So just the way that they were sorted, right? I know I didn't submit ones that were specific to that one, so.
Okay, that's why, that's why I didn't see it. But I did see on the first one that you did have a bunch of goals in there. So I just wanted to make sure that was included. I'm not sure if anyone, maybe everyone else is fine with it. I think it just needs to be more specific, and I don't know that it represents what the school committee was saying. Fully, fully saying.
And Bronwyn, I'm happy to take a shot, and then I'll turn it over to Suzie, and I think Mary might have a comment as well. But, I mean, to me, I really like us having big goals and broad goals, and then leave it to the superintendent and the admin team to figure out how to implement it. I know that they've read all of the things that we've submitted. I know that. So I'm not worried about our things getting lost in the implementation piece. I think that if we get too specific, then these goals are gonna get to be overly lengthy and too prescriptive. And that's, again, my personal take. So I like that they are ones that are broad and that we've been able to take all of our submissions and whittle it down to something that fits on a page and a half. I'm nervous about making it more specific in this turning into three or four pages, but that's just me. Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, Bronwyn, I see what you're saying, and I'm wondering as I look through this. I mean, really, number one, I would say the curriculum goals that are there, those four, which are directly, in a couple of areas are directly related to some of the feedback we got from the community, Marty, from that community survey that we kind of unpacked during the September fourteenth meeting with the admin team. I think all of those belong under budgetary goal number one. I think the curriculum goals could be number one under budget. Because it's really not just the multi-tiered systems of support. We wanna make sure that anything budget related uh, attends to these w- w- what look like priorities for curriculum, which is the alignment and implementation of the vision of the graduate, providing the multi-tiered systems of support, differentiated instruction, and inclusive and equitable practice. Do you do um, is that something that you're thinking? Do you think that would um, like, kind of resolve the issue you're having with number one under the budgetary goals if like basically the curriculum goals were kind of substituted for number one?
Um, possibly. I know that's making them long. We can, I we might be able to shorten them up there, but.
Or if we somehow refer to them versus, you know, rewriting them, just um, that the, you know, successful, well, we can change the wording, but um, yeah, I'm just thinking because all of that really kind of captures. I mean, yes, I agree that there's some really important pieces there about the literacy and math coaches. We want to make sure used in the tutoring and the strategy, but all of that could be in some way captured in those four. So if we can somehow reflect those four in the budgetary goals. Right, reference to them.
I'm just a little bit confused. Uh, Marty, can you go back up to that? Thank you. Um, I'm just a little bit confused that the wording implementation of multi-tiered systems of support doesn't appear anywhere in the anyone submitted goals. And then outcomes related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I see once. I know that everybody supports those. Um, I don't know if they should be under budget, maybe if only one person mentioned it under budget.
So Bronwyn, I I think that's a good suggestion, and and I like what Suzie said as well. Here's one potential solution to that. I think part of the problem is that if we have the budgetary goals go first, that confuses what's going on. Um, my suggestion might be to move budgetary goals down below or last. Uh, but if the curriculum goals come first, we could then or come before the budgetary goals. We could very easily combine one and two and just say, number one, you know, the maintain a fiscally responsible budget that supports the creation and implementation of our curriculum goals, something, well, let Suzie write the wording. Um, and and then number two, the health and safety of each member of the learning community. Because Bronwyn, your point is a good one, that the the things mentioned in one and two for budgetary goals were really stressed in other places, especially the curriculum. And so maybe this is a way to hold more true to what people wrote, but still get in there that we want to make sure our budget allows us to do those curriculum things that we're talking about. So does that get at your point, Bronwyn?
Definitely. I wish I said it like that, but thank you.
Gianna, go ahead.
I wish I said it like that, too, because now y'all are just really going back to my original of like, we we need to not have either have everything or not have anything. But um, I I'm also wondering, do we need to limit it to the curriculum goals, or is it just the budget's gonna attend to the school committee goals? Because now if you're throwing in curriculum goals, you might as well throw in the communication goal, you know, like.
Right, but I I think the way I look at it is I don't think we need money to do the policy goals. And I don't think we need money to do the communications and community relations goals. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Tom will tell me. We should just have money for everything.
I mean, there's there's little things that we would have to do towards each, you know, there's like, y'all already said, there's so many other things that we can't put on here in writing because there's so many. But who knows? Like, who knows if we create a pol- like, you know, I I just I I think it's just as easy to say, making a budget that supports the goals.
Suzie's gonna say that, and we're gonna be all set and able to move on. So Suzie.
So just to um, there's a there's an approach to budgeting that um, I I can speak from my experience as a superintendent, and it was always mission German. Um, so when I presented a budget to the school board, um, it was related to the strategic plan and what was on the docket for, you know, actually a- approaching, you know, and and implementing our mission and vision for the school district. And so I think it's important to highlight that, yes, I I agree with you a hundred percent. We do a lot of budgetary things. We have to make sure the place runs. We can't take money from from like electricity utilities, right, to to uh, approach our goals. But at the same time, we can shine a light on and be um, accountable to as a school committee the things that we've established priorities around. And so we listen to the admin team to for them to give us some direction in that regard. We we got that when we met, which was helpful. We got, and I think some of that was articulated in the school committee goals for sure. But I think in general, a budget, you're right. I I I agree with Kevin. I think we could simply say policy, curriculum, and then budget is, you know, we will respond to the needs or to, you know, the priorities articulated under policy and curriculum in order to, you you know, through our allocation of budgetary line items, et cetera, whatever whatever it sounds like. Apparently, I'm writing it, so I better, I better get, I better get on top of that.
But I also feel like, Suzie, if I can interrupt for one second, I also feel like by doing that, it's more reflective of what everyone has, I mean, not everyone, but like more of the themes that are here. So I just feel more comfortable with that. If you don't mind writing it, thanks.
No, I I know, I agree. I agree with that. Um, and I think that I think that this was a, I think, just to give Marty and and Diane kudos that they're, you know, to synthesize, but I think that's the struggle with the budgetary component is that, you know, if we can articulate it, the budget will be driven by, you know, the goals that we've articulated, both the district improvement plan and the school committee goals around policy and curriculum. In hindsight, like, you know, putting budget as a goal area might not have been might might have been like, oh, well, budget actually supports everything, right? Like, we have to have the money to do this stuff. Policy and and quite frankly, and policy can result in budgetary allocations. If you if you change policy enough that you have to make a major shift to your practices because of implementing the policies, yeah, it could re- it could result in that. So just um, and just food for thought as we as we do that. But I I agree wholeheartedly. I think we can just simply chalk the budgetary goals up to supporting the other two goal areas.
Thank you, Suzie. Mary, go ahead.
Um, well, just to comment, um, that it's obvious that we would support it through budget, so maybe we shouldn't have a budgetary goal. So that's just one thought. Uh, the other thing, I feel like I'll we've like I ha- I had a comment a long time ago, like the conversation keeps moving, so I'm just gonna jump back like, I don't know, ten comments ago, which is um, a comment about the process. So of course, we cannot communicate about the goals except for our open meeting. Um, and, you know, our retreat. So when I received the the papers and I was able to see everyone else's goals for this meeting, I realized I was really specific and that, you know, some other committee members were a little bit more general. And so I want to commend you, Marty and Diane, for putting these together because I was looking at these statements almost as umbrellas. So when I looked, for example, at multi-tiered systems of support, I recognized, oh, these are the things that um, were meant by that. Um, or, you know, some of the other ones that are a little bit generalized on on the goal statement that these umbrellas were the result of a conversation. And I mean, there's a lot of goals on this sheet. Were a lot of people, and we submitted a lot of information, so I think it was well done. Um, but when I when I look particularly at the curriculum section, this really seems to be, and this has been said again and again, sort of the cusp of what the conversations were that took place with the admin team and also, um, I feel like are most reflective of what was said by individuals without that opportunity to really say, what are you writing in real time? And, you know, to look at it after the fact. So I guess those were two general comments. I'm not sure if the budget goal is too obvious to actually articulate. Um, I did like, Gianna, I'm going back to your idea, um, from the retreat when you said that that is one of our responsibilities, so it would be nice to have a budget goal, but now that I'm actually seeing it in practice, I'm like, okay, well, our budget goal is to turn on the lights, but also to support some of these other endeavors. So maybe that's not something we need to articulate in our goals. And I also really like the idea, Kevin, that you mentioned of moving that curriculum to the top because that seems to be the thing that was really highlighted, not only in our written goals, but in the conversations that we had um, with admin teams.
Yeah, Mary, thank you for that. I'm I'm just gonna take it for a little bit, Suzie, and then throw it back to you. But thank you for that. And and it's, I I don't know if anybody else is chuckling, but the issue of whether we have budgetary goals comes up every year. Right? And so, yeah, so I really appreciate you bringing it up because we're often like, what do you mean, we need a budgetary goal? Like, we need to balance budget. And we need to do the things we said we want to try and do. So like, why do we need a goal? And like, every year that comes up. So uh, yes, we all agree with you, and we struggle with it every year. So, um, Suzie.
Yes, and that's why we ended up with the document we had last year, which wa- which had the umbrella statement at the top, which was through, you know, our um, authority with budget, policy, curriculum review. These are the goals we're going to attend. So that's, I think, um, yeah, so now we're 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 kind of right back where we started last year. But that's okay. It's it's good. I think some mention of at the end of the day, our like fiduciary responsibility to the town is huge. Is it's a it's a big part of our work. And so I think mention of it, yes. Making it a goal area, probably not. However, there are a couple of pieces that, you know, I think and again, in the last two years, we haven't talked much about it, but a- a- at the school committee level at least, but the tax ceiling. You know, there there's other pieces that we need to be concerned about. What will happen when we actually, you know, finally get through and um, MSBA, hopefully someday. Um, and we have to go through the process of of potentially addressing our middle school. So like there and and I saw that on there, which was which was great. But again, I think we've had like a a sort of a um, hiatus on having those two issues be at the forefront of our budgetary conversations. But at the end of the day, our fiduciary responsibility is huge. It's it's the primary responsibility we have to the to the town.
And I feel like a lot of people, uh, a couple of people mentioned that. Maybe, um, Marty, do we have to, did we have budget goals last year? I I should remember this, but I yes.
We we did, Bronwyn, and they were very brief, is my recollection.
Okay, were they similar to this, like specific things?
Uh, Gianna, you have that? All right. Gianna, do you mind just reading that for those of us who?
It, so if I'm looking at the right thing, Long Middle School Committee twenty twenty, twenty twenty one goals. And as Suzie mentioned, you know, the the top part, the Long Middle School Committee is committed to continuous improvement. In doing so, through resource allocation, policy development, and curriculum review, the committee commits to these measurable outcomes down below, and fiscal is one of them, Bronwyn. Uh, and it says fiscal, the committee will continue to advocate for funding for the district by working with other town officials, committees, and our legislative delegates. Pretty much what we have in our proposed one, just different wording.
Is that the only one we had?
Yes.
Okay.
We did have that blanket statement up top.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful. I mean, can can we add that again or no to that?
We we can just vote that we want the same goals we had last year. No, and and
We honestly, we, I mean, to Kevin's point, um, we weren't able to get to a lot of them. Um, when I looked through them before I did these goals, I was like, oh, goodness, you know, I don't know that we were able to, you know, get as far as we wanted to on some of those. Um, I think adding new stuff is good, too, but I wouldn't mind uh, repeating some of last year's. And I do think that statement at the top is super helpful. And then that kind of covers everything that uh, this way, if I'm a, if I'm just a resident, Marty, can you go back up to the budget thing? If I'm just a resident and I'm like on a, I don't know, fixed income, or I'm uh, worried about the tax ceiling, like someone just mentioned, and things like that, and I look at the budgetary goals, I as a uh, a stakeholder, like a non-school committee member, I want to see something that says something about the fiscal responsibility and things like that. I don't think we should just assume that, because because we are fiscally responsible, hundred percent. Um, but I don't think we should just assume that people know that we're fiscally responsible. I think that we should have it as a goal and maybe putting something at the top like that, and then something similar to last year, or take a couple of things that people wrote this year, um, and mention the fiscal responsibility, and then take these three things and uh, place them elsewhere.
So so Bronwyn, I think it it seems like there's some some agreement for that. Um, I I think my take would be, I I think we did work hard last year to come up with goals that we were all happy with. Um, I think that the preamble we used last year is is probably a good one to use again this year. And and maybe it makes sense, again, to to get rid of budgetary goals, but, you know, call it fiscal like we did last year. Move it down, move the other stuff up. Um, I think the statement last year made sense, but I I do like how we have the additional one of, you know, supporting the health and safety of each member of the learning community. I think it's important to keep that in this year, so that's the only thing I would change in terms of the fiscal piece from last time. And I think that will capture what people wrote in in the spirit of the discussion that we have just had right now.
I think that makes a lot of sense, for sure.
Okay.
Other people that are bored with that.
I think I I'm tempted to have us vote on the piece that I just said so that we can agree to that and then maybe move on, if that's okay with people. And I think my proposal would be to go with the wording from last year, and I'm happy to read that again as the sort of introduction. And then have the budgetary goals turn into sort of a fiscal piece, maybe even fiscal responsibility, I'm not sure, but um, and then move that down so that we can highlight the curriculum ahead of that. So the the preamble last year was, the Long Middle School Committee is committed to the, is committed to continuous improvement. In doing so, through resource allocation, policy development, and curriculum review, the committee commits to these measurable outcomes during the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. That's the preamble. Then we would go again, further down, something that says like fiscal. A, the committee will continue to advocate for funding for the district by working with other town officials, committees, and our legislative delegates. And then I would say, B, um, the committee will work uh, to support the health and safety of each member of the learning community. I I don't think that's as good as it should be worded in the final document, but hopefully we get the spirit of it.
Right.
And and I know that Diane can help work with me and Marty to to shore that up, but um, or do people seem comfortable with with that as our preamble and the fiscal part of the goals?
Yes.
So it seems like we're okay to move on from there. Excellent. Okay. Um, I I'm tempted to to take the curriculum piece next because it sounded like that was the part that people wanted to talk the most about, or or maybe there's even just agreement on that. So if we could move to the curriculum piece, and again, Marty has that up on the screen, uh, which means that I don't necessarily have to read it because everybody can see it. So are there questions or comments on the curriculum goals? So are there questions or comments on the curriculum goals? Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. I, um, number two, providing multi-tiered systems of support for students, uh, then the concerning has been disrupted by the pandemic. I didn't think that part was necessary because I feel like it, we just shouldn't be doing it, like it's, you know.
So, so Gianna, just to, to, you were saying provide multi-tiered systems for students, period, or like get rid of the rest of it?
And I almost feel like it's not just for the students. Like, I know the students are receiving, but like, in my school, I'm a beneficiary of MTSS too, because it helps with my, so.
Can we say implementing a multi-tiered system of support or something along those lines? And then we don't even have to say for students? Is that your point?
Yeah, I just think either, yeah, it's, it's students and everybody in the school, or it's, yeah, what you just said.
I- i- implementing.
Can I, can I just add my wording?
Uh, yeah, sorry. I, I should leave that to you. Sorry.
Sorry, can I just, if we, so if same wording as the top, um, so it would be successful creation of and implement, su- successful creation and implementation of multi-tiered systems of support for students?
Yeah, that, that sounds great.
Suzy, I'm just gonna ask again about the limiting it to students. I think it benefits.
Oh, it's, it's multi-tiered systems of support. That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Other comments and questions? Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, number three, differentiated instruction to inclusively account for differences in students' learning, learning needs, competencies, interests, and levels of readiness. And this could be implied, but I, you know, I was the counselor. Could that be academic and social, emotional, learning needs, competencies, interests, you know, like throw in social, emotional? And if we need to use academic to clarify the difference, but I just want SEL in there somewhere.
Suzy, please.
Uh, holistic learning needs, would that capture? So we're not just looking at academic, we are looking at social, emotional?
I mean, I think that would, would cover it. I don't know.
I would agree. I like the term holistic.
Yeah.
Other comments and questions? Nicole?
I just wanted to say, I think one of the things that I like about the curriculum goals, um, and the way they're laid out is that they continue to go back to our role in supporting those district improvement plans and their focus. Um, and so I like that that's kind of the focus of that along the way.
Sue, did I see your hand?
Yeah, it's debating. Um, three and four are really nestled under two, under multi-tiered systems of support. Especially the social, emotional, and behavioral needs. It's part of the, the tiers of instruction. So it depends on how, you know, precise you'd like to be, but I think that if you cut it at two, you would get all of three and four, just based on what a multi-tiered system of support is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I take your point for that, Sue, but um, I'm gonna back to something that Bronwyn brought up, which is people from the community who read this, they may have no idea what a multi-tiered system of support is. So I really like that three and four highlight some of the important things that are happening under there. So I, I think to your audience of educators, that might look redundant, but I think to a broader audience, I don't think it looks redundant. Suzy?
And to add, I think, again, as I said before, three and four actually came from the, the, the survey you gave to the community. So people have seen that language and will, will appreciate seeing it here. I think.
Bronwyn?
I didn't think about uh one thing that I didn't know if we could talk about. Um, Suzy brought it up, and when I saw it, I was like, oh goodness, I forgot about that. The challenge success survey of student experiences uh that we voted on last year to, to have them come in. I don't know if people think that's, um, if we could put that in there as well, or?
What, what do you think we would put in with respect to that, Bronwyn?
Suzy had put the school committee will support the progress. No, that was me. The school committee will review, analyze, and determine follow-up priorities slash action items from the grade six to twelve challenge success survey of student experiences to be administered during twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Suzy, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we had a lot of conversation about it last year. It was part, I think it was put in as part of the essay or or maybe not. I can't remember exactly which line I went, went in, but there was a decision to, to give the, the survey. And I know there's various times throughout the year that it can be given. You wouldn't want to give it now for sure. But the idea is that will give us a lot of feedback too, to continue to attend to the curriculum and policy goals. I think personally, um, depending on what is, what the, the trends and uh themes are that come out of that. So, um, yeah, just, just a thought. I, I thought it was important to include that. There is a whole framework around, you know, how you then approach your next steps based on what the data yields.
Marty, do, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I, I think it, as I see it, that challenge success survey will help us with the VOG. It will help us understand students' holistic needs. It will help us kind of make sure we're creating equitable access for students. But I certainly understand if you want to elevate it and include that in your goals, by all means, we can, you know, happy to sort of help you figure out a way to reflect that in the curriculum goal.
Gianna?
Suzy is, so that's just one survey. And I'm wondering, we have a lot of different surveys. We have a lot of different data points and data collection. Is it worth it instead of just pointing out the challenge success? Is it worth it to add a goal that speaks to data collection from multiple, you know, I don't know, whatever the word is, modal, you know, multiple avenues or, or, or methods? Because again, my mind is just thinking, if we're talking about challenge success, why aren't we talking about the other surveys that we do? Why aren't we talking about the other assessments that we just talked about earlier? So I don't know if it's, if that's possible.
Suzy, go ahead.
Do you want me to respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I yes, and, um, I think there was a I want to say we had a lot of questions last year about the shift to remote learning and the traditional practices that were implemented with remote learning that didn't necessarily um, go well, um, grading practices that, you know, don't really address, you know, learning in a hybrid or remote environment and are those having, you know, are, is is the perpetuation of those practices, you know, contributing to student stress? Overall, and, and so some of those questions will be answered in there. So how, and, and again, that's just like one avenue that I, that I was speaking of. There's a multitude of components that this survey addresses specifically sleep, patterns of kids, and their engagement in classes, what, um, that, the type of learning that they go through, the pressures that they're experiencing, what are the sources of those pressures, things like that? Um, and we get high level, uh, we will get high level, um, analysis of those results from the Stanford team that, uh, that reviews the data and then presents it to the school. So I'm, I'm just, I think there's an opportunity there to really dig into what are the experiences of our kids in grade six to twelve as they go through their, you know, adolescent slash secondary school experience.
Marty, go ahead.
If you wanted to incorporate it, uh, either in the prefatory sentence or as a concluding sentence, you could say that this work, work will be informed by, you know, um, a multitude of data points, climate surveys, including the challenge success survey. I'm just trying to think a way to synthesize your, your conversation here, if that's something that you, you want to include.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah. Would, would you put it at the end of this as a standalone statement, or would you try to weave it into that first sentence?
Uh, I, I think I would be tempted to put it in the preamble because it says that we commit to these measurable outcomes. And we can highlight that part of the way we're going to measure that is by the things that you just said. So does it, do you think that you could work that? All of this, right? Not just the curriculum piece, but everything. Is, is that seem workable, Marty?
I, well, just for the committee to consider, do you want to elevate it, that, the challenge success survey that much so that it goes in the preamble to all of your goals? Or does it belong in a, in a, in a sentence tied into curriculum? You know, for your, for your consideration.
It could very well, you know, prompt policy review. Um, it could prompt curriculum review. It could prompt budgetary conversations as well. So I think I think it's all encompassing, just as other data points are. So I think you'd want to, I mean, we, we made a vote as a school committee that was a special, you know, budgetary decision we made. I think we should I personally feel like, you know, we need to hold ourselves accountable to doing something with it. Because we, we did endorse it and approve it.
Thank you, Suzy. Gianna, go ahead.
I think, I have to look back, but I think I might have voted no on it. So I think that's why I'm like, you know, we're, we're focusing on one piece, and I hear you, it's comprehensive and you know, I, I kind of, you know, kind of like putting it in the top preamble with no specifics and it's just, and you know, it happens to be one very big one. Maybe it does get stuffed into curriculum somewhere. But if it's part of the leading preamble, I don't think it should be specifically named.
I, I think that's, that's a fair point, Gianna. And I think my, my take on all of this is that when we say something about measurable outcomes and using data, I think we're giving guidance to Marty and his team to like figure out how to do this. And I think the, the survey that, that Suzy and Bronwyn are mentioning, um, that's going to be a, a really big piece of that. And, and I don't think, I mean, Marty and his team aren't going to forget about that. So, I mean, I, I think that we're all in agreement. It's just how do we put it in the goals? And I, I think it might make it easier if we do just are a little bit broad in that preamble. And then we know that this is going to come back to us. And Marty, is that a fair way to put it for you and your team?
I think, uh, however, however the committee wants to go with that, I, I, I know that you're invested in that survey and if you would like it to be specifically mentioned, that's, you know, totally understandable if you want to be a little broader. I think that's really your, your purview, however you want to frame that. But either way, for sure, um, we won't forget it and look forward to administering the survey and bringing the results back and using it to, to shape our, our work going forward, so.
Uh, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, ultimately, the committee did vote uh to continue with the or start the challenge success survey. Um, I like how Marty, in that sentence that you wrote, you mentioned a couple other things as well. I think, um, including all is helpful, um, especially seeing these, you know, or I, I forget exactly how much it was. But I think maybe why, maybe that's why we're, uh, you know, bringing more focus to it, like we want to make sure we people know that we're going to utilize this information from the people at Stanford. And, you know, there's a reason that we voted uh to include it, you know, even though it cost us some money.
So it, it, it sounds like we're, we're we're, we're struggling to, to come to consensus on this one. So I, I think I'm going to try to offer a potential consensus point, which is to include sort of broader language in the preamble and then perhaps have in some sort of parenthetical way or something under curriculum, some examples of how we might measure those curricular things, which could include the statement that Marty said previously with several examples of how we might measure some of those things. Would, would that be acceptable to the committee? I'm seeing nods and thumbs up. Okay, so Marty, do you, do you think you have enough guidance to, to revise that set of goals with that addition?
Uh, I wonder if Diane could read back what, so I, I, what I had suggested was, so, um, this work will be informed by, um, I can't even remember how I phrased it.
Can I read to you what I got?
Thank you for bailing me out as well as Diane, yeah.
I don't have it all, but I have some of it. It said the work will be informed by a multitude of data points, including the climate surveys and the challenge success survey. And I didn't get what else. You did say something else. I just don't know what that was.
Yeah. We'll, we'll give Marty time to figure that out, or Suzy will fill in.
I'll have to roll that tape, Marty.
I, I would suggest just district assessment results because then that captures all of your district but, you know, your eye ready, your, you know, other assessments that you do as well.
Mary, go ahead.
Well, and even potentially to look back at some of the individual submissions, because these are based in some kind of data, whether it's the equity report, for example, or, you know, they're not just random. So I think that that might actually be a good process to take a look at what was suggested and then take a look at what data points probably the committee member used to arrive at that suggestion.
So my hearing, we would have a statement at the end of the curriculum goal, but you would also have some, you'd beef up the the preamble at the beginning. And to beef up the preamble at the beginning, you would, you would say something about being driven by it's, it's data-informed but, or goal development?
Diane said.
Is that, is what Diane said? Is that going to go under the curriculum heading, or is that going to go in the preamble? I just want to?
Yeah, my, my suggestion was that the specific things go under the curriculum.
Okay.
And that the preamble, it says commits to these measurable outcomes, and then something after measurable outcomes informed by, you know, data collection on district surveys or, you know, broader, something along those lines, so that we clarify what we mean by measurable outcomes in the preamble. Okay, so it, it seems like we are in agreement. Gianna, go ahead.
Sorry, Kevin, I'm gonna, um, can, can we stay on curriculum just a minute longer?
Are we still, yeah, well, I'm just just because the first sentence, the school committee will engage in fro- broad curriculum analysis and revision to support the district improvement plans focus. Like, when I look at broad curriculum analysis and revision, like, I feel like I'm sitting with Susie or Mary or or Nicole or or in a classroom or or at a meeting. And we're like literally like revising the curriculum, which we're not doing. So I don't know how to fix that, I just know that gotta be different.
As the.
Susie, go ahead, yep.
As as the um, well, we haven't met, so I don't know if I am the chair. But as the previous chair of that uh committee, no, but I I think it's important. Really, our our areas of responsibility include re- analysis and review simply, um, not revision. So I would agree with you there, I think we can we can take that off. The other thing is, under policy, we have school committee will work through the policy subcommittee. Should we do the same, should we, you know, should it follow the same structure for curriculum as well? So that, you know, the curriculum subcommittee really is the over, i- is the is the first line, you know, to to recommend, you know, items for revision or review, well, review and change um, to the to the school committee, to the broader school committee.
Yeah, Susie, I I like that idea. And and I mean, that could also be something where we talk about the policy subcommittee for the policy goals and the finance subcommittee for the budget and fiscal goals, just to get the highlight that we have all these subcommittees and the goals are aligned with the subcommittee. So that may be something that we can include in each of them. And so I I personally like that idea and I also like the idea of crossing out broad and saying, right, engage in curriculum analysis and review, as you said, that's the charge of the committee. And then, Gianna, I think that gets to your point where we're not doing a broad anything, right?
No, our focus is too.
Right. So I I I like those suggestions. Other other comments and questions on the curriculum piece?
So that part, just to clarify for Diane, and she's really good at picking up on the conversation. So it would say, the school committee will work through the curriculum subcommittee to engage in curriculum analysis and review to support all those things. Okay.
Any other comments on the curriculum piece? All right, so I think we have consensus on that modification, those modifications. Um, let's move to the policy goals. And um, and and again, that has the wording that Susie talked about having, you know, work through the policy subcommittee. Uh, what other comments or questions do we have on the policy goals? Uh, let's go Susie and then Gianna.
Um, I and this is, this just follows my other um comments. Um, so I would add supports the successful implementation of diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. For number two, supports the district's commitment to the health, safety and wellness of each member of the learning community. And number three, supports the successful implementation of curriculum instruction and assessment priorities articulated in the district improvement plan.
Thank you, Susie. Uh, Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin. I was just wondering if to have the school committee will work to the policy subcommittee to inventory, analyze and revise, and I didn't know if um we could also, if it's appropriate, if we could include uh to inventory, analyze, revise and draft new district policy, like, do we?
May- maybe we could say and potentially draft new?
Yeah.
Other comments or questions on these policy goals? As everyone's being quiet, I'm tempted to move on. All right, that sound, that seems like consensus on those, so I'm flipping the page. All right, communications and community relations. So one one thing that I want to bring up, because I know I failed greatly at this as the clerk last year. Um, it was the whole communicate monthly with parents and via local newsletters, all that stuff. Um, I I felt like there was a little bit of uncertainty on that last year and I want to make sure we're clear what we mean by that being, you know, number three. Because we didn't do that last year, and by we, I mean I. Um, and I think if if somebody is going to commit to do that, and I think Diane made a a strong point last year, which is like, we should just include, you know, have the school newsletters have the link to the meeting minutes because that's our communication, so don't make more work for ourselves. And I really liked Diane's comment and that may be why I didn't do a distillation of the minutes. Um, but I think we should just be clear what we mean by that. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure we got that out there. I'm happy to take other comments or questions on these. Susie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, the number two, we talked about this at the um. We, I love it and I think it's so important. I think we have to be very clear that it doesn't have to be the students coming to this room and and recreating a situation, that we'd like it to be authentic. So if there's a video or if there's some other way that they can present it, I just think it's, it's hard. Kids are involved in a lot, they have so many things going on and they might not be able to make it to a a an actual meeting. Thank you, Dagan. But they might be able to put something together to present. If they want to come, that's great. If they can't, then they have options. And I just, I just think we should um not make it so that they have to come to us. Um, I think there should also be, you know, opportunities that if if something is actively going on in the school, let us know about it. Um, you know, we're happy to show up and and watch it in in, if we can, if our schedules allow. I know we're all working people, but um in real time. But also just making it accessible so that we can see more, quite frankly, um, and not have to rely on it being scheduled all the time.
Yeah, that that's a a great point, Susie. Do you think that we need to revise that goal or just take that goal with the spirit that you just mentioned?
I would I would be open to taking it in the spirit that I just mentioned. Um, with the superintendent just making sure that your admin team knows and the teachers know that it you don't, it's it's not coming here and doing something, it's anything you'd like to submit.
Other comments or questions on the communication and community relations goal?
Kevin, are we changing number three?
Yeah, sorry, Bronwyn, yeah, go for it.
Oh, sorry, are we changing number three to make it a little bit um, like, take out newsletters, maybe? And s- I don't know, may, unless we're going to put it on social media accounts, I'm not sure. Um, but about maybe just keep the messaging, well, and you know, links to the minutes of the meetings and.
Yeah, I mean, it, so I let me take a stab at that, Bronwyn, which is the school committee will communicate monthly with parents in the community uh via links to the minutes of the community meetings and links to the recordings. So just cut out that middle part.
Right, okay.
It is that, does that make sense?
Yes, definitely.
Gianna, go ahead.
Kevin, is there a way to say parents and guardians or parents and families? Some of our parents are, we have guardians as well.
Yeah, no, good point, good point. So communicate monthly with parents and guardians and the community, something like that. Parents, guardians and the community. Okay.
May I make a suggestion for wording?
Please, please, yeah, yeah.
Instead of guardians, um caregivers is, I think, a more appropriate terminology at this point.
Thank you, Susie. Other comments and questions? Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I know we had talked about it and I know that I've brought it up a couple of times. Some kind of language or goal regarding the committee's kind of self-evaluation to to monitor our progress towards the goals. And I didn't see it, I I see number one is um, you know, communication between the committee and the district committee by holding joint events, focus on relationship building and the goals of the district. I don't know if it's, do we fold it in there or just, what does the committee, I I feel like we need to have some kind of accountability first. We we hold superintendent accountable, he holds, you know, everybody else accountable. But we have yet to like, say, like, in January, how are we doing towards our goals? And then then in June, do we meet our goals?
So I I think that's a good point, so I don't know if that goes under communication and community relations. Right? I mean, I think your point is a good one, but that's not the place to put it. I'm not sure where the place to put it is.
It could go in the preamble, if we set a date for review.
The only, the only place that it makes sense, so add something to the preamble about.
The school committee will review its progress related to these goals um before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Kevin, I think the um, I think Diane sent out was super helpful, the roles and responsibilities. I think that's where, uh, I I also put it in my thing, Gianna, about um, the self-evaluation.
I have a little wrench and it's not with regard to any of these, but it's something that didn't show up on any of the goals and I, it just kind of factored into my thinking. And that is um, we are, we just negotiated, but we also have to negotiate again. And so I think there's a a budgetary component that um sh- should be related to our goals around um negotiations.
Yes, is a goo- good point, so um, ho- hold on, just just a second, so I think.
I just didn't want.
Yeah, no, I don't know if everybody heard Bronwyn speaking before you said your point. Yeah, so Bronwyn, I think that was a, that was our problem with being here and all that. So uh, let me take up what Susie just said and then Bronwyn, if we'll go back to you for the point that you were making. Um, so Susie, I I think the point about adding negotiations to our budgetary goals is a good one. I'm not sure exactly how to put that, but I I think that is a good point because that is going to be a huge priority of this committee. And I think it makes sense to have it there, so thank you for um reminding us of that. And I think it is a good thing to put there. Um, and and Bronwyn, if if you want to take up what you were in the middle of saying from the beginning and we'll all make sure to hear you, because again, some of us, it's hard with having the, yeah, the challenge of having the speakers and all that stuff, so Bronwyn, please.
I was just following up on uh, what Gianna said about the um. What do you mean, the roles and responsibilities thing that uh Diane sent out? It talked about the self-evaluation of the school committee. I don't know if it was specific to just the goals we set or the roles and responsibilities uh or both, but I do think it's important because um it it is something that in the past, I don't know that um. I think we could definitely improve on that. I don't know exactly where that would go or if people want to add it.
So so Bronwyn, it would it would it make sense? I mean, I I think what we're we're moving towards is adding some sort of that language to the preamble or it could say something like the committee will review progress toward these goals at a meeting in January and and at a meeting in June or something along those lines. So we have said in our goals that we will come back and look at these and see how we're doing. Is that getting at the point that you're making?
Definitely.
Okay, and and it seems like we're all happy with that being in the preamble um, because that's not specific to any one goal, but to all of the goals. Okay.
Thanks.
Right, so I think we're, that will be included. Are there other things related to the communication and community relations that people wanted to revise, add? Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin. It just occurred to me, does number four go here or does number four go in curriculum?
Uh, I mean, to me, that sort of seems like the list of things that we added as like data points. So I think your point is a good one, that this could be on those things that we talked about adding to the curriculum. Marty, perhaps you can comment on that?
Where this came from was a couple of committee members had talked about working with a representative group of stakeholders um on the implementation of CLEE. And then I think uh that seemed to be a common um input at your September fourteenth meeting to make sure that we are, that that the goals are reflective of the findings of the equity audit. So um, I think, you know, knowing that we're, we don't work in a vacuum as Long Island Public Schools, we're part of a wider community, wider culture, that the the feeling, I think that the thought was that um we want to stay engaged with the wider community on that CLEE report, that we don't want to let that uh fall away and we want to keep it not just on our radar screen administratively or as a committee or with educators, but with the wider community.
Yeah, Marty, thank you for reminding us of that. I definitely had forgotten that we had talked about that being a task force with some representation from the committee, but also from the community. So I I think that that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification. Mary?
Um, just to Gianna's point, when I read that um again, I thought, oh, wait, that should go under. And but then I think that the focus of this statement is that community stakeholder piece and not, because we do have equity in our curriculum goals. So I think that this is really, the focus is that community partnership.
Other comments or questions on the communication and community relations? Okay, so I think, I think we have worked through all of the sections. Are there any remaining comments or questions? Mary?
Could you just summarize the budget one? Because I feel um mixed up about that one, just what does it say? Are we going with that original one, which here?
Here, here's what my recommendation is going to be. Uh, I I don't, I I would, um, I can't move anything. I would perhaps suggest that we not vote on this tonight. There are too many changes that we've made. I don't think we all understand what we're voting on. I think we need to do some editing. And so I I think the spirit of the budgetary or fiscal piece is going to look similar to what it was last year, which was the committee will continue to advocate for funding for the district by working with other town officials committees and our legislative delegates. We're going to then include something about funding for the health and safety of each member of the learning community and something about how we are going to undertake negotiations. Susie ha- and Susie will send some proposal language to Diane, Marty, me, whatever. So I think, I I feel like we have a consensus around what we want, but I don't think we're ready to vote on this tonight.
Okay, that sounds good to me because I was feeling a little bit like, well, I agreed as we went along, but I'd love to give it a read over before we have a vote. Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
Yeah, I I definitely agree, Mary, and and I thought, I saw a lot of thumbs up um from other folks. I it just seems premature to vote. And I I think Marty, i- I think. And I I think Marty, I I think you have what you need to move forward knowing that we're going to come back and and have probably, I I hope, a brief discussion of this in two weeks' time. And then we can vote to accept it. Is is that okay for where you?
Yeah, hu- a hundred percent. And and maybe we ought to ask Diane to see if there's anything that she needs any additional clarity on, or do you feel like you have everything you need, Diane?
I actually edited in the Word document. Um, so I'm pretty good. I'll have to go back and look at the tape a couple of times to make sure I've gotten most everything and then I'll send it to everybody. Or to you anyway, Marty and Kevin.
Send it to Suzy.
Okay.
Um, awesome. All right. I I feel like we we made a lot of progress and and I I continued to really have a lot of uh admiration for the folks on this committee that we were able to, I think, do some really difficult work, uh but get us to a better place. Um, doing these sorts of things as a committee are really challenging. So thank you to everybody for um for making a lot of progress on this. And and I appreciate everyone's as we work through this. Okay, so I think we're good to move on to our next issue. Do do we need a motion to table that vote? Or since it's a possible motion, we can just ignore it and move on?
You can just ignore it, yeah.
Brilliant. All right, um, so now we are at new business. Marty?
All right, uh, so uh, as you know, we um have since, I guess, springtime been engaged in developing a district improvement plan that will guide our work over the next three years. And there's been a number of inputs into this uh process, beginning with the equity audit, including the expansive staff and community survey, including uh our administrative retreat over the summer, uh including our conversation with the committee on the fourteenth, just to name a few. And and of course, all the other um assessments uh that we've been involved with. And then also another input obviously is the sort of the work from the previous district improvement plan that needs to be sustained and and built upon. So for your uh review and I I is a document in your packet um titled overview preview of the twenty-one twenty-four district improvement plan. So our intention is to um, this, this is not meant to be the plan, but rather a Reader's Digest, easy-to-read overview of many, not all, but many of the components of the district improvement plan. And so hopefully uh you see your conversation that you just had and the conversation that you had back on the fourteenth. Hopefully you see that reflected in here. Hopefully you see the uh staff and community survey that we completed reflected in here. And so for um for the folks at home who might be listening, really, the the focus is on uh inclusive and equitable practice. And there's, there's three components here. One is um expanding high-quality instruction based on uh universal design for learning. What we heard from the staff and what we heard from the community and what we've talked about as as team with you is uh is really uh heightening our focus on tier-one instruction. And we think that a good framework for that is the principles of universal design for learning, which is a a key component, as Sue will talk about shortly, a key component of MTSS. You know, giving students multiple means to represent their learning, presenting information to students uh in in multiple modalities and giving students uh opportunity, multiple opportunities to to represent their learning. So so the 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 principles of universal design, we think, can can really uh sharpen our focus on on high-quality tier-one instruction. And so you see some of the uh activities associated with that under goal one. Goal two is really that broad focus on MTSS, which was really, you know, sits above uh UDL, but we we wanted UDL to stand alone as a goal because it it just came out so loud and clear uh that, you know, we need to be very purposeful about differentiating instruction based on students readiness, their needs, their competencies, that kind of thing. But goal two relates to uh that entire MTSS framework, which Sue is going to present an overview on shortly. And I know the committee's generally familiar with that MTSS framework, but we think that it it really represents a a a way to tie together a lot of existing work and in a way to sort of, sort of check ourselves to make sure that we're uh staffing the right way, that we're making the right budgetary investments, that we're providing the right professional development. And so um you'll hear a little bit more about MTSS shortly. And then finally, this notion of developing a broader renewed and widely shared vision of student success. And this really, um, again, I think this is something that uh we initiated with the last district improvement plan uh and resulted in in a vision of the graduate, resulted in, I think, your interest in that challenge success survey. Uh, it has been this community's focus on the holistic needs of students. Um, and it's also tied into a lot of the work that we've done relating to standards-based teaching and learning that and 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 putting uh students at the center, giving them opportunities to um demonstrate their learning in different ways and having a wider conversation frankly with this community about what student success is. What what do we mean by student success? And think of different ways to define student success. Think of different opportunities for students to achieve success. So that's that, that's the third goal. And our plan is to bring back to you a refined version of this district improvement plan. But we thought tonight, we wanted to kind of give you this sort of sneak preview almost. Much of this you've already heard about. But we hope that it's also an opportunity for you to uh maybe provide some additional feedback. If there's anything that, you know, you're seeing as a as a glaring omission, we'd want to hear about it now. Or if there's anything that you, you know, want to ask some questions about, um, we're happy to answer those questions. So again, not meant to be, you know, the the complete plan, but rather just a a preliminary overview overview for you of 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 what will be the the final plan that we'll present to you uh at an upcoming meeting. So I'll I'll leave it at that. And I know we've talked quite a bit about goals and direction and a lot of the things that are on this are were already talked about in the last hour or so. But if there's anything that you'd like some information on or any glaring omission, um certainly, we're all ears and it doesn't necessarily even have to be tonight. I'm happy to uh pick up the phone and talk to any committee members about any, anything that you're seeing in here that you're wondering about.
Comments or questions? Suzy?
Um, I would ju- I just have a comment. Um, I'm interested um in it's in the, when you present, if there's a possibility that you could identify how project or problem-based learning would be incorporated into this plan.
Thank you, Suzy. Other comments or questions? Marty, thanks for the overview and and I know we're all looking forward to hearing more about it.
All right.
So. Um, MTSS, let's see, we put together a slide deck on that and are you able to do the?
I think I can share it. Uh, no. Sorry, I'm. I don't have a great connection tonight for some reason. You see it?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. And there's a little bug flying around my face too.
Sue, I I think we're all struggling with weird connectivity issues tonight. I don't know what's going on, but I think that's a theme of the meeting, unfortunately. Yeah.
Okay, so just a quick snapshot of multi-tiered systems of support because it really is the foundational framework that we're basing the majority of our our work on and our goals, our focus areas over the next few years. It really encompasses all the things that we believe in and that we're working towards. So um MTSS is a tiered system support. It's a framework really that uh has a lot of strategies that work together to support the individualized needs of all of our learners. Definition. So um there are three elements of uh multi-tiered systems of support. There's uh the foundational elements in right up our alley, the foundations of MTSS is uh based on equal access for all and universally designed instructions and assessments. So um that reaches all of the work that we're doing with our equity committee, wanting to be inclusive, our DEI work, uh making sure that our lesson plans are designed universally, they're targeted for students' needs, they're steeped in identity-based instruction. Um, so um that's kind of where our focus is for next year of, as far as UDL is concerned. And then uh there are focus areas for tiered supports and tiered supports uh start in the classroom. They can move up to, you know, a small group outside of the classroom, a small group inside of the classroom to really more targeted, specific support for one or two students, uh not special education and important to know. And important to know, it's not reactive. So you've probably heard about response to intervention. This is really a a proactive model as opposed to, oh, I see you might be uh struggling with fractions. We're going to put you in a small fraction group without having to go through the whole RTI process without, you know, just going to pop in there for a few days and see how you do and sure you up. Or heck, I realize you're reading Harry Potter in kindergarten. You think we need to find something else for you to do, you know, on the other end of the scale, you know, you know, so. Um, moving through those tiered supports is really important for students to get their kind of just-right instruction. And Gianna, every time I look at this, I think of you because it's academic, behavioral, and social emotional. So not relegated just to the academic piece for sure. And then kind of wrapped around all of these things are the systems responsibilities, like our our philosophies, our leadership, our ability to hire and retain staff, our ability to support schedules that support students best, right? So um, that's kind of where I see the the big work happening and making sure that we, you know, we 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 put funding towards the things that allow us to have equal access for all. So. And I won't have to go too deep into this, I just kind of said it all. But these are some of the the driving factors behind or the systematic factors. Um, you know, shared responsibility and collaboration, supporting that collaboration, coming up with time in stu- on teacher's schedule so that they can meet and and talk about outcomes and students and really decide where they need to be in that tiered system. So um, that's kind of the the wrapper. I kept to call it the system driver for for this. And then um our tiered systems of support, we already talked about, but students should be able to move up and down tiers pretty fluidly. They might be in a tiered uh support group, small group for ELA and, you know, might be an ex- an extension group for math. So Suzy talked about um and and your goal is about kind of like really developing and implementing MTSS. It's it's a I appreciate that because it's a giant undertaking. It's not just here, it is, let's do it, right? So um we are unwrapping the MTSS wrapper, like Marty said, and we are diving into two big components this year. Uh, the UDL uh especially. And so um, just that's where it sits in the framework. An equal access for all. And you, I won't go over it again. You've already heard me say it, but uh the foundational elements of the multi-tiered is based in equity for all and universally designed instruction. You'll see that our district goals are really focused on uh elements of MTSS. I couldn't hear myself, so I don't know if anybody else heard me.
Sue, thanks for that. And just for the committee, uh, we had over the summer when we uh did our administrative retreat, uh, one of the activities that we engaged in was doing a a sort of a district assessment, a self-assessment of all the components of MTSS. So we started to get a handle on um what aspects needed the most attention. And I think that's really, uh, it was out of that retreat and the survey and so many other inputs that we really honed in on universally designed instruction uh for a as a as a as a way to uh promote the differentiation that we we know is uh something that we're, we want to stay committed to. That was a major focus of our district improvement plan uh from seventeen to twenty. And it will continue to be a focus, but using the UDL framework as as the jumping off point. We have a a in-service day, um, a professional development day on November twelfth, I think it is. And so um a big component of that day for the staff will be to uh make sure that we have at least a sort of a baseline starting point knowledge of UDL. There there's a lot of folks who are already pretty far down the road with this and and are have incorporated UDL concepts into their lesson planning. But um, you know, it's something that we think is a a good way to focus our work. So.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, thank you, Marty. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, thank you, Superintendent and Sue for the update. Um, Superintendent, when you were talking about, you know, the upcoming discussions that y'all are going to have and especially around like messaging and and presentation and and, you know, um to the community beyond educators, we're just all happen to be educators in this room. Um, I happen to be on a um uh MTSS training today. Um, and one of the facilitators made a great point. And I know, um, I don't want to speak for Nicole, but I know that we've had this conversation before. Um, to just, to just be clear on the um kind of the the definitions of equitable and inclusive because it's so easy. Like I did it when I was on KLE. Um, I automatically think like race and ethnicity. So I, you you know, I see that it's here. Um, different abilities, races, gender, that kind of stuff. But um the the facilitator today, uh, she was just talking about how it's super important. Um, because again, for like myself, I'll speak for myself, it's so easy to fall into the trap of those two major things. But when you're talking about, you know, equity and inclusivity, you know, we're talking about everything and especially, you know, the more you learn about seal, you know, like. So I I just think in terms of the messaging and presentation to the community, that's huge. And that comes from a facilitator. Um, MTSS facilitator today. Um, but I also know from personal experience, sitting on KLE, that it was easy, easy to fall into that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gianna. Uh, Mary, go ahead.
Um, just a small comment that I was happy to see that you have some thoughtfulness regarding scheduling. And I also thought that built into the um district improvement plan, like when we think of how we're using time. Because these are amazing plans, but if we're not giving educators time to implement them and there's not purposeful scheduling in terms of common prep time or time to implement some of these strategies in an advisory block um or a win period or to provide that time, it's really difficult to navigate that for students and for um and for educators who want to co-plan. So um, it wasn't like a glaring thing, but I did want to acknowledge that I noticed that. And I think that that shows that this is thoughtful in how it can actually be implemented. And it goes back to um Suzy, again, that whole implementation piece that we can have these great ideas, but it has to be practically implemented in order for it to be successful. So scheduling, as much as we don't want scheduling to dictate, um, you know, what we do in schools, it really has to also work with what our initiatives are. And so it came up in your presentation and it came up in your goals too. So thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Other comments or questions? All right. Thanks, Marty. Thanks, Sue. Um, onto our next topic. Sue, stop the share.
So you can stop sharing your screen.
I'm trying. I'm trying. Yeah, I don't have any. Okay, I'm done.
All right. That's that's one way to do it. Okay. So your next item on the agenda is uh access for quarantine students. And so uh this came up at your last meeting and uh we fielded a a few questions um from parents about how we will support students who are quarantined due to close contact exposure or perhaps because the student is a is actively positive. And again, good news is we we have very few students that are actively, that have are are positive right now, and we have very few students that are are quarantined. However, uh it it makes sense for us to plan and strategize on how we're going to support quarantine learners because even if it's one or two students, we we want to make sure that we have some supports and plans in place. Um so the the what's what's currently happening is our educators have extended themselves with their use of Google Classroom. So Google Classroom has always been sort of a a homework exchange vehicle. Uh this year, the homework assignments being posted, but to the extent that it's practical, our educators are also posting uh regular uh classroom assignments. And so if it's a, if it's a video that the kids watched in class, if it's a reading that uh that the students did in class, um if it's, if there's a PowerPoint that was viewed in class. The expectation is that, oops. I think that's coming from yours, so, all right. So the expectation is that the um educators would would post that to Google Classroom, and the students be able to access the daily classroom activities through Google Classroom. Sort of based on what we heard from the committee at your last meeting, uh we sat down and and tried to develop some additional plans for how we're going to support students who are experiencing quarantine. You may have seen uh that we have recently posted for academic tutors uh to support uh quarantine students so that the these academic tutors would be hired to make real-time synchronous connections with students during the school day. And then uh our own educators could also um serve in this capacity outside of school hours. But the hope is that we would have a uh a cohort of academic tutors to assist students who are learning remotely. They could make real-time video-based connections with kids, make sure that they their questions are answered, they understand their assignments. Now, you know, like every industry in America now, you know, finding um qualified folks for these positions is a challenge. Uh and like we were sort of quick side anecdote note, um one of our administrators had pointed out that Chickaby Public Schools just recently posted uh for substitute teachers at a rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. So it gives you some idea of, you know, the 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 challenge that districts are experiencing, you know, trying to to find people who fill these roles. So um so I I just throw that out there as kind of a, you know, that that's that's what we and so many other industries are up against right now. So um but nevertheless, we are receiving some applicants for these academic tutor positions, and our hope is that we can have some educators, some tutors available to students to, you know, and and again, depending on what the pool of applicants look like, we think that there would potentially be people assigned to particular grades spans, you know, pre-K one-two perhaps, three, four, five, middle school. And then at the high school, it might be, might be more um subject or discipline specific. So that's part of the strategy as well. The the third thing that we would like to talk to the committee about um came out of our exploration for how we can support quarantine students. But we identified something that we we think actually has um really high value for us, not just to support quarantine students, but also as a a way to support students who um whose learning was disrupted last year and who still might be struggling to stay on track. Uh and and it's a a tool called uh Paper. And so I included a few uh overview materials in your in your uh packet on Paper, and perhaps some of you were able to do some investigation of this tool on your own. Um I have just a promised two slides uh that I, we'll even make it one slide, that I'd like to show you that Overviews Paper and might be helpful to anybody that is uh watching at home. So this is um this is a a sort of quick overview of what Paper is and and why we think it's a a powerful solution. And it is a uh twenty-four-seven um one-to-one chat-based online tutoring program. Uh it provides students with homework help, writing feedback, and study support. It, you know, as Sue pointed out to me earlier today, it it really lines up with the way um students learn and communicate nowadays. And so they have an opportunity to uh work with one-to-one with an academic tutor uh via a uh chat-based tool where they can um whiteboard together and where even our students could uh share a file, they could perhaps take a picture of a a math problem uh and post it to the tutor, and there would be that one-to-one exchange. The beauty of this tool is that it is completely transparent and accessible to our educators. Uh the 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 work that our students would do with these online tutors is completely accessible to our teachers. They would gain some valuable insight into what kids are struggling with and where the learning gaps are. We have had the opportunity to um sort of witness firsthand what the experience would be like for students who access a Paper tutor. And uh the tutors use a Socratic approach, they are very rigid about not supplying answers. They uh pepper the 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 students with questions so as to help them arrive at um answers and conclusions themselves. Um it 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 becomes almost a a virtual uh teaching assistant for students that they can access twenty-four-seven. So the the why, that's that's the what, that's sort of a description of what it is, the the why it is uh something that we have, you know, think is valuable to us is that it really lines up with our interest in providing equity and access to all learners. Um we know that, you know, students' ability to access support outside of the school day varies widely. You know, depending on home circumstances, sometimes, you know, based on soc- socioeconomic factors, but students have varying levels of access to support once the school day ends. Uh our educators are great about responding to students as much as possible, but there's there's obviously limits to that. Uh this fills an important uh need in that area. Highly personalized, uh it's it's a great way to ensure that students are completing homework and that when they come into class, they feel confident, they feel ready to learn, and that they've mastered or that they've had good practice at least at whatever the teacher has assigned for homework. We think that this is a a really important tool for us, particularly at this moment when kids experienced a lot of disruption and that there's, you know, the learning gaps that come out of this, you know, the the last year and a half. And additionally, it does provide a solution for quarantine learners. So that our investigation into Paper started as a way to think about how we can support quarantine learners. And sort of the light bulbs kept, you know, uh going off, and we we started to see some greater possibilities with this tool. Highly scalable, it's something that that, you know, can, that many, many students can access. So it's something that that we're excited about, we've had an opportunity to um talk to districts that locally that are using Paper. I talked to uh Lady Martinez, who's the Assistant Superintendent uh in Springfield Public Schools, speaks very highly of the product. Uh Agwan is using it, Southwood Tolland is using it. Uh and and we think that, you know, at this time, at this moment in this year, it really could provide some really needed support to kids. And think about what it might mean to um family life as well, where, you know, parents are juggling a lot of responsibilities. And, you know, I remember when my kids were, needed that additional homework help, and sometimes I had that time and energy to give to them, and sometimes I didn't. Um but this is, this provides sort of regular, steady access to to additional academic support. Kids get what they need when they need it, which is, you know, that's really at the heart of good education. So um there are a couple of videos that we could show you. I I my sense is that the committee is is uh somewhat familiar, we're we're happy to answer any other questions you might have. We did receive a quote that, there's a hard copy of it um at your at your table here, and it it came in um on on Friday, but we had some, we've had questions of our partners at Paper that we've we've begun to talk to. So the, to implement it, it's it's roughly around six dollars per student uh on a monthly basis, depending on how many students you roll this out to. So at the, if you were to uh implement this for students in grades six through eight, it would be annualized at forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven, that's the the current quote. If we were to look at students six through twelve, uh the cost would be a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and forty-six dollars. So it's it's a significant investment, but the way I think about this is if we um are committed to it with fidelity and we have a lot of students using it, then it's a really good investment. If if frankly, uh and and the opposite is true, if we were to commit to this and we don't have students using it, and we don't have educators kind of encouraging kids to use it, or educators even looking into the, getting the the reports and using the reports, then, you know, frankly, it it wouldn't be responsible to to make this investment. But um, you know, we we think it has great potential for us right here and now, and, you know, we we sort of um put this out to you for your for your consideration and 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 your questions. And uh if there's, if there's any, and in fact, I think on the call tonight, um I I happened to notice that uh the representative from uh Paper happens to be on our call, so uh I suspect we could put her on the spot if we had some questions that we couldn't answer. But we've done a lot of homework on it, uh spent a lot of time with this, and and happy to hear your thoughts and questions.
Thank you, Marty. Thanks for um for all of that on our, uh you know, access for quarantine students. I mean, it's really helpful for us to hear all the things that you and your team and and the the teachers are are thinking about. Uh comments, questions, I saw some hands go up. Um Brown, and I think you had a comment or a question.
Um no, I really appreciate the way um Marty laid this out, like just what and why. So I actually don't really have a lot of questions. Um it looks like it could be a huge advantage for hopefully a lot of our students. Of course, we don't know how many are gonna use it, but it seems so flexible. I can't imagine anything else that we could provide or offer that would um be better than this, um especially this year. And with us having some of those um grants and things like that, I think that could put us in a position that, you know, even though it sounds like a lot, it puts us in a position hopefully to be able to spend it on on some of this. And it could be the quarantine kids, and it could be, I mean, when they say twenty-four-seven, that means like if someone was at like the middle of the night, they could get a uh access to a tutor. It's crazy.
Yeah, we're we're encouraging students to call these people at three AM, not necessarily a great idea.
No, but it's just, it's 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 unbelievable. And uh I I'm really impressed by it. I don't um actually have any questions, I'm really quite excited about it. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Brown. And Sue, I I think you wanted to say something.
I just wanted to comment on the three AM because that was a s- one of the spots that I was maybe concerned about. We don't really want kids on at three AM. Um during the pandemic, I think kids kept crazy hours, but um Mc- McKenzie, I think the rep from Paper uh assured us that we could turn it off if we needed to. I don't think we will, but it was just one of those things. But um we looked at Paper over the summer to see if we could um utilize it, we needed something a little different over the summer, we needed a starting point. Paper takes current student assignments and lets students work with them. I I think it just, it just speaks to the way kids communicate these days. It it, you know, someone has a struggle with a a math problem, they can fire off a text message to a a tutor and and have them walk through the problem with them. I think it's, I think it's brilliant.
Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, no, this is um, this is pretty amazing. Um and and, you know, the scalability certainly seems uh seems like it's it it it's right in tune with what we need because if if we're having difficulty finding, you know, math coaches, we're not gonna be able to find like enough people to do um any kind of quarantining um instruction or anything like that. So I think that's great. The the question I have is, do you have the option to go monthly and then uh, you know, because it's a monthly cost per student, and then use the data that they generate to tell you how many students are using it, how many educators, or I I would assume you get some pretty robust reports on that.
So the the reports are robust, um and given that it is broken down as a monthly price, I suspect we could do that. I think, you know, what we've heard is it it does, the the implementation of this, it it requires a lot of education, a lot of marketing. You really got to push it out there. So if we did it, you know, I I definitely would want to give it uh enough time just to ensure that, you know, we can get our legs under us with it, but uh uh we can, we can confirm that with our contact to see if it it's potentially can be a monthly thing.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily suggesting that the monthly thing, it's just that hopefully there's there's lots of communication with that data uh involved that helps us determine, okay, how do we need to target, you know, the kids who need to access it most? How do we need to work with the teachers who aren't accessing it, who are like at their wit's end because they can't get the the kids, right? So like, what what kind of, what's your marketing strategy with this if for some reason it's being underutilized? And tha- that's all I'm really concerned with because it, I I mean, who would not want this used? I, this needs to be used, and if it's not, what kind of support do we have to kind of get that? That um participation and engagement higher?
Sorry. Um Paper does webinars, I think they've said, once every couple of weeks for parents, so parent webinars, student webinars. And, you know, I think once teachers kind of realize how they can use it and how they can assign an essay, and, you know, here's your essay prompt on Monday, work through it, you know, with your tutor on your editing and and bring it back on Friday, they they'd have a product that looked really good. If like it's a a no-brainer if we can get it, but we, it is all in the marketing, I agree.
Nicole, go ahead.
Um I, thank you for putting all of this together. I know you mentioned um teacher visibility into sessions in order to monitor progress. And I'm just curious what that might look like um at the teacher level, the ability they would have to see, for example, um chat sessions to see what kind of advice is being given, what kind of recommendations are being made, how a subject is being taught, um so that they can see what their students are getting out of these sessions and make sure that they're on the same page with what they're attempting to teach or where the lesson is going. Um so I'm curious how much visibility that provides and how long that visibility stays active, I guess.
Can I show you a sixty-second video?
Yeah.
That 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 will start to answer your questions, so.
Wouldn't you like an in-depth look at your students' habits? By using Paper, you can see what your students are By using Paper, you can see what your students are working on and where they need help. Teachers have the option to view everything their students are doing on the platform. This means all tutoring session transcripts.
Yep, not working.
And every comment left on their reviewed essays. If there is a lot of student activity, you can make it more digestible by choosing date ranges, specific topics or classes, or all three. If you want to check on a specific student, type in their name to search for their profile directly. A lot of teachers worry about where students are getting supplemental help from when they work independently. Is it from a reliable source? Do they understand the problem or are they just finding answers? Here, you can see exactly how our trained team guides students through their problems.
There we go. My apologies, that, that didn't work out so well. So there is a-
If it helps, I could hear a lot of it, so.
There, uh, there is a monthly report that students see so they can see the, and they can also see the exact transcript that, between the student and the tutor. And they can narrowly search out that, that exchange. So they can search it out by student, by course. The, this, this is integrated with our student information management system. And so students currently log on to several applications using Clever. It's a single sign-on tool that we use. And so students would log on to Clever and the, you know, then it would automatically connect them from there with a tutor. And so the, the integration with our student information management system ensures that the Paper tutors can connect with our educators and that our educators can see that conversation in that transcript chat. So is that, I don't know if there's anything to that? Yeah, okay.
That's great. Thank you.
I, I can't even unmute myself. Thank you. No, that was right, Marty. We, it integrates every night with our, our power school system. And so if a new student came in on a Thursday, they'd have a, an account the next day, which is great. But the teachers and have, can look at exactly what the transcript of the conversation was. So I, I can, I see where people might be worried about that, but it's, it's really clear as to what they're working about. And I just wanted to say that I've seen a couple of demos now and we went online with a real tutor and just kind of buzzed in and asked some questions and tried every which way from Sunday to get that tutor to give an answer. And there was no way it was coming. So they, they do a really good job. And they think, they put their tutors through a pretty rigorous training program. So it, it shows in the, in their work.
The tutors only see the child's first name. So there's really nothing personally identifiable. They don't, they don't know the, the, the child's schedule. They don't know the children's grades. It's, it's very anonymous, that, that connection between the tutor and the, and the student.
So just a, a couple of thoughts that I have. Number one, I think it's going to be wildly popular. Tom, you're going to need to start working this into the budget every year. If we do it once, I cannot imagine that people are going to be like, oh yeah, I didn't think that was valuable. So that's something that we should just be aware of. Uh, number two, as a teacher, I'm nervous that students who I want to be, as I say to them all the time, productively uncomfortable, are going to become uncomfortable very quickly and say, oh, I can just talk to my Paper tutor instead of actually thinking about it their own, trying to deal with failure, trying to deal with a little frustration, trying to take their own initiative. So I think we need to be careful about how much we push this because I think it's going to be really easy to say, oh, I'm going to talk to my Paper tutor instead of actually thinking about it myself. That's one of the things I've seen when tutoring is so easy to access. The unintended consequences are there. So that's something that I want us to think about. And try to, try to at least investigate that piece. And then the other thing, again, unintended consequences, I know my students use services like this when they have real assessments. If it's open twenty-four seven and I have an assessment going on in class and I'm sitting in the back row, I'm going to dial up my Paper tutor and try to see if my tutor can help me on my quiz or my exam. My teacher might have the time to look in to figure out if I did that during the exam or quiz. Might not, but I think we need to recognize the realities of when students have access to stuff like this, they're going to use it in ways that we want them to, in ways we don't want them to. And we just need to recognize that. So those are just some things I would want us to at least go in with eyes wide open.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Sue and Superintendent for, and everybody for doing the research on this. I absolutely agree with everything and, and Kevin, thanks for bringing up those unintended consequences. I was wondering, Sue, like, you know how, like in my school, I feel like every year there's like a different, like investigation, like there's a different program, you know, the flavor of the month kind of thing. Will they have to, like, is, would that have any impact on like a tutor having to know like words their way and, you know, like, or?
No, it doesn't matter what the content is. I think they have over two thousand content areas specialists. But the, the students bring the work to the tutor. So it doesn't matter what book they're using, what text, you know, what language even. And I, I don't know if it'll make you feel any better or not, Kevin, but the two demos that I saw were really inquiry based. So the tutor was really probing for, well, what do you think you could do next? You know, instead of just kind of giving answers or leading. So I, I get it though. Good, good point.
Yeah, and, and like that doesn't surprise me because their best tutors are on the demo, right? Like, I mean, that's the way that these things work. Let's be real about it.
Well, I thought so too, but we allegedly pretended we were a student and just logged in and got any, a random tutor. So.
And, and again, I would have no problem believing that for the most part, that's how it works. But I will be shocked if that's how it works all the time. Gianna.
Yeah, maybe, Kevin, there's a way like, again, you know, in our school with the different, with all the virtual learning and stuff, I know there was a way for certain programs to be turned off for like an hour. You know, so if a teacher was giving an assessment, is there a way for them to, to communicate with, you know, like, and turn it off for an hour? No? Okay.
No, and you're right, the teacher would have to go back and check the transcript for that time that they gave the assessment. You have to log into, so say it was, they, it was class and he wanted to, you know, have an English paper kind of looked at with him. He would log in through his English class, but he presents the paper, the work from the class. The teacher is not there, but the teacher knows he's doing English, you know, work. So.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't want to, to, to beat this to death, but I, I'm hesitant to add yet another thing on the teacher's plates that they have to do. Again, that's how I feel when I have to go on the internet and see if somebody's posted questions to my exam that are in CHAG or some other thing. Like, I don't like having to do that and putting more of a burden on our teachers to try to figure this out makes me nervous. And again, I have no problem with us doing this. But let's make sure that we check in to make sure that the teachers are happy with it, students are using it appropriately. Because again, strange things happen. Gianna.
Sorry, I keep getting sidetracked from my actual original question. Can we consider K to five as well? I mean, it says K to twelve, like, I just feel like when we're thinking about what we've been talking about these past couple of months, you know, in terms of the interrupted instruction, like Kevin's always talking, you know, the equity and the quarantining. Like, I would like to see, you know, I know it's double the price. Or is there a way to like figure out who from K to twelve, you know, I, I just feel like K to five needs to be in there.
Yeah, I, I think you, you, you may not, I don't know how low you'd want to reach. I think you, you need learners who are ready to self-advocate, can, are, are in a position to communicate via, via a device. So there's probably some tipping point where it doesn't make sense when you, when you get into the lower elementary grades. I think four and five, I think districts, I, I, I haven't heard our rep talk about many districts that are using it below grade four, but that's something we could check on.
Most of the area districts are using it in, in the upper grades. But we have a homework protocol that, that, for the elementary grades where we don't assign a ton of homework at the elementary, Jenna. So I'm, I'm trying to think about that kind of cuts back the, the need for the tutoring, although it would still reach the quarantine kids and stuff like that. So I hear you. And they also have to be pretty adept at uploading, typing, those kinds of things.
Any other comments or questions? Sure.
Yeah, thank you both for that. I, I, you know, our kids right now are able to use devices and they spent a whole year and a half using devices, learning how to use devices. And I, when I think of something like this, I think also of the, as Superintendent pointed out, the benefits to the family as well. I mean, when my kids were younger, you know, they learned math differently. I was not able to help them with their homework. And if I'm, you know, at a school committee meeting until ten o'clock at night, you know, if I've got a spouse or if I've got a babysitter who can support the, you know, getting on the device, I'm pretty sure they all at this point have had to get on a device, you've given them devices. Like I, I, I would just strongly encourage, maybe we can consider, you know, how to make it accessible for, and again, going back to the equity and, you know, I would just really strongly encourage considering K to twelve.
Other comments or questions? Marty, do you have what you need?
Yeah, I think really just getting some clear direction from the committee. I think I'm hearing that the committee would be comfortable with the grade six through twelve implementation. And so that would, that would be, the quote that we have currently is a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. Tom has talked about it being a, a, a good application of S R three funds. There are some, some, some grants that we could access through Paper where if we were willing to serve as a reference, it would bring down the cost, it would bring it below that a hundred and eleven thousand dollar mark. If we were to add in lower grades, fifth grade and fourth grade, it would be, you know, again, probably at that five, almost six dollar per month cost per student. So it's, you know, if that's something that the committee is comfortable with us exploring and implementing, or, or you want to just leave it to us to kind of make that final determination whether or not it makes sense for fourth and fifth grade, we're, we're happy to do that. So I just want to, at, at least minimally kind of get an understanding that the committee is supportive of the grade six through twelve implementation.
Mary, go ahead.
Just a quick comment that it might be very helpful to get some feedback from the younger grade level teachers, just to see what they think. I mean, I could see a use for this in the upper grades, but I am wondering about, you know, I, I was also thinking about the homework policy in the younger grades that many students don't receive very much additional work beyond. But to Gianna's point, we have kids in quarantine, but at the same time, how many kids in quarantine? We'd be paying six dollars per kid and we have this other potential tutoring option that might be more beneficial for live tutors if we can find highly qualified folks. So I don't know, feedback, we are, we wouldn't be using this with students. I'm curious what the teachers would-
Yeah, my, my personal take, I, I think it makes sense to, to go for it with six to twelve. I, I'm skeptical about below six, my personal take.
So perhaps move forward with six, twelve and then-
Gianna, go ahead. One, and then Marty, you can go.
Sorry, Superintendent. Thanks, Kevin. I, I guess I should have also said, you know, I hear you that homework is, is on a limited basis in, you know, K to three or K to five. I also am thinking about students who are in school, who are, you know, struggling to, you know, to receive the instruction or struggling with the instruction. So it's not necessarily about homework as well. But if they're coming home crying saying, mommy, I didn't know what they were talking about today. I didn't know how to do the work. You know, mommy, daddy, you know, whoever, caregiver can, can work with the school and figure out, okay, what are the things that they're being instructed on? And how can Paper, a Paper tutor, help with that? Not necessarily just about homework. I know you said as an example, but I just really think, you know, our foundational learners at that level could really benefit from something like this.
Brown, go ahead.
Maybe we could start with six through twelve and see how like the sixth and seventh graders do. And then we could always add later on if, if we saw a fit. Maybe.
That, that would also give us time to get some feedback from teachers to see if they think this is a way to go for the higher elementary.
Right.
Marty, is that-
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate your interest in, in the, in the cautionary advice that Kevin gave. I think makes a lot of sense. So thanks so much.
All right. I, I'm looking ahead on our agenda and I think the things that are still there are timely and we need to do them. Is that right? I would, I would love to table things, but I don't think we have the option to table any of these things.
I think you could table the advertising on school grounds easily enough.
If, if, if that's possible, I, I would love for us to do that and take it up in two weeks.
Uh, the school physician resignation is very quick. M A S S conference is just a matter of notifying Diane if you intend to go to the M A S C conference so that we can say check on that.
And, and I, I would just, sorry, I, I would just say on that, if people have questions about that conference, definitely give Marty a call. And, and I would say to any committee member, if you would like to go, great. If you don't want to go, don't feel like you have to go. I feel like that's been the advice given to us every year. And, and again, Marty, I know is happy to field questions about that. And, and I know we have the athletic trainer issue, which I do think is timely. So Marty, do you want to, should we do the school physician first and then go to the athletic trainer? Or what do you think?
Sure, it, it's, okay, that's what you want to do. Uh, Dr. Sally Ginsburg has been a great partner and has served as our school physician, consulting physician along with Dr. Judy Tapper. Sally's has indicated that she will need to resign her position as she's moving out of the area and, and we're so appreciative of everything she's done for us. The, so it's a matter really just of accepting that resignation. And I'll bring a plan back to you at some point, a recommendation for how to fill that position when, after Sally's departure. Diane, does the committee need to vote to accept that resignation?
Yes, because school physicians are hired directly by the committee. So you would accept their resignation.
Yeah, and, and we do have a, a possible motion to do that.
I move that the school committee accept the resignation of Dr. Sally Ginsburg and thank us for her years of service to the students in the Long Meadow Public Schools.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Uh, and, and the only thing that I would add by way of discussion is just, again, to acknowledge, you know, that, that both of our physicians went above and beyond in the last year and a half. positions went above and beyond in the last year and a half, um, and so we're deeply in, in their debt. Uh, any other discussion on this one? All right, we will move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, I think we should do the trainer. Uh, Tom, are you taking this one?
Thank you, Kevin. Um, so I will try to be efficient with time here. Um, in your packet is a memo kind of outlining uh the situation uh that we're asking you to request a approval of creating an athletic trainer position in the Long Meadow uh High School. Uh, this service has been provided to the district for the past uh ten years or so through an uh, through an outside vendor, uh, and outsourced the model. Uh, we were notified back in the spring that the vendor was no longer going to continue that service. Uh, we did solicit bids, we did receive a response from one company uh in mid-August. Um, they have yet to sign the contract because they have not been able to hire a individual to fill that role. Uh, in that, in the meantime, we've been also thinking about long-term in terms of stability of the position and turnover. Uh, districts in the area that have used the outsourced model have reverted to bringing the position back in-house in the last year or so. Um, and so by moving forward and improving the creation of this position, it would give us that flexibility in the very short term to decide whether or not we wanna continue with an outsourced model or have the individual work directly as an employee district. Um, as, as the memo indicates, the, the salary, it would be a, an annual salary that the employee would be paid based on a, a work year of um around two hundred days. There is some flexibility needed based on the work schedule, a lot of the work is afternoons and evenings, there are some weekends and holidays that they would need to be present, so um we're just uh looking for your approval in creating the position as one does not currently exist in our uh budget for the high school.
And, and Tom, I think this sort of obvious follow-up is like, how do we fund this out of our current budget?
That's a really good question, because either way, whether we bring it in-house or use the outsourced model, it's gonna be a new cost for the athletic program. Uh, I think what I would propose to you tonight would be that we would run the cost through the athletic revolving account and then evaluate financially how that program is doing. This past year, uh, we subsidized it through the general fund. We have an allocation there for salaries, we had it to go, we had to go above and beyond that this year because of uh our costs exceeded revenues related to that program. Um, either way, this cost is gonna exist. It might have to become eventually a budgeted position that is in the budget from year to year that uh the salary is accounted for.
Comments or questions? Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Uh, my only question is, um, this is not a, an affiliated um position, meaning it's not part of a bargaining unit, that's correct, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then um, second, I will honestly say when we moved to, from a contract-based service to a full employee, it was the smartest move we ever made in our district. So I'm in favor of it.
Other comments or questions, Gianna?
Yeah, I agree with Suzie, I think it's the, it's the smart move too.
Anyone else?
Just add one more thing to that, for the purposes of the, of folks at home, I mean, i- if you hire someone and they stay with you long-term, they get to know your kids, they know previous injuries, they're, it's just, it's, i- it just makes so much sense that, you know, they're interacting with the kids, you don't get, you know, just haphazardly someone assigned to you that doesn't know the, the, the kids, this is just to make sense.
Thank you. Um, it, it seems like there's strong support, Tom. Um, and and it doesn't look like we have a recommended motion, do we not need a motion for this?
I recommend a motion to create the athletic trainer position in the athletic program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Uh, Suzie?
I move that the school committee approve the creation of an athletic trainer position for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me, thank you, Tom. Um, I think we have made it to the end of our new business, Marty, am I right about that?
You have, and and I think at this point you could table the executive session till your next meeting.
Uh, I, I think we would all welcome that. So I would, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We need a roll call vote on our motion to adjourn. Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me, uh, thank you, our meeting is adjourned, we'll see you in two weeks.